I'd like to call to order the City Commission, City Marine City, a meeting on Thursday, April 20th at 7:00 PM. Now can we get a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Bryson.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Rourke.
Here.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Interim City Manager Heslop.
Here.
Item number four, the approval of the agenda. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
And we have a motion support, and then we also have a discussion item. We need to add actually 11F, and that's going to be under unfinished business. At the last meeting, there was an agreement to join the Eagle Model Cross-Connection Control Program. There was a portion of that that we needed to do, and that was to adopt a resolution that came with the approval of that. So we needed to add the resolution for that, that we just approved at the last meeting. So it would be Resolution 007-2023, called Resolution of Adopting the Eagle Model Cross-Connection Control Program, Publicly-Owned Water Systems.
I amend my motion to include F, 11F, 007-2023 Eagle Cross-Connection Resolution. So for the public's benefit, this was what we had discussed last time, we had approved it, we didn't know that we had to make specifically a resolution. This addresses that nuance.
It's supported.
Thank you.
We have motion and support on the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. On item five, public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission, please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes, the commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. You like to go first?
Hope Alex Shack, Marine City, Michigan. First, I want to commend Commissioner Hendrick on how she ran the last meeting, filling in for the mayor during her illness, I'm glad the mayor's better now, you did a really good professional job. Second, Commissioner Bryson, some of your actions have raised a red flag with me. These actions are along the lines of what appears to be playing favorites. I will of course explain what red flags these are. During the hearing...
Sorry Phil. Paul. Phil, time flies.
I guess I... No. During the hearing, during the hearing, our former mayor called alleging charter violations against Commissioner Hendrick. You voted yes, and with that yes vote, were in obvious support of attempt to remove Commissioner Hendrick from this commission, when our former mayor held this hearing under 5.4 of our city charter. A few short months after this hearing, our mayor sends an email to the police chief, giving him orders which is more than obvious, a direct violation of our charter. After using the FOIA process to obtain the email, I bring the email to not only the state's attention, but the commission's attention as well. I also made a special point to bring it to you direct via email, as you seem to be very concerned with commissioners that violated our charter. However, even after bringing this to you, you did not request a hearing and did nothing. Now out of nowhere, you request an inquiry under 6.8 of our charter into Commissioner Hillfrank over an arrest that happened. The question I have is why did you come after Commissioner Hendrick, but not go after the mayor, when there was written documentation with the mayor doing her action, then decide to now go after Commissioner Hillfrank? Are you playing a game of favorites, who you don't like, do like? Please respond publicly. And the reason I bring this up is, I've noticed since we've had a turnover in the commission that I feel things are becoming more cohesive as the commission begins to work together. The last administration did push for all the negativity, has to stop, has to stop, has to stop, and suddenly this inquiry gets called by Commissioner Bryson. Inquiries like that set us back, especially when they're possibly over nothing, and I'd rather see this commission work together, and if you're not going to do it for one, and you're going to do it for one, if you're going to skip another one, then do it for another. Please don't do it at all. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks Phil.
Catherine Warner, South Main Street, Marine City. I'd just like to voice my displeasure with the so-called investigator's pick to look into the commissioner's, Hillfrank's ill-advised call to Chief Heslop during the recent run-in with the law. The acting mayor chose a commissioner who voted against moving forward with the investigation, and who himself is being investigated in Cotreville, and also chose her sister. Now what's wrong with this picture, and why didn't any commissioner object to that?
I did.
No dialogue.
Sorry, I did though. Apologize.
Make sure that's on the record. Finally, I'd just like to say no to pot shops in Marine City. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Walker?
Roland Walker, 519 South Elizabeth Street, 35-year resident in Marine City. I got a couple of things I want to speak about tonight. I apologize for not being here at the last meeting, but it was Holy Week with our church, we had a lot of activities going on. Want to reiterate, repeat this, it's the issue I've been talking about, about the pot shops, and about the marijuana dispensaries coming into town. I think everybody knows all my feelings on that, I want to keep beating the same drum because I have another issue I want to bring up and talk about. However, again, I want to reiterate, it's all about the kids. Your job as commissioners is to look out the most vulnerable people in town, as I've said many times, that's the kids. With edibles coming into the market, into these, and that's a big part of their business, it's going to get into the schools, it's going to get into the toddlers, it's going to be out and available in town. I get it, we can't oppose, we're not going to have 100%, there's going to be some that's going to appear, but when you open up a pot shop, one or two, or whatever number it is, it's going to increase, it's going to be in the schools. There's no way teachers or anybody can monitor things like brownies, and cookies, and candy, and little kids love what? Brownies, cookies, and candy. So the police department's going to be dealing with the issues out on the street, in the playgrounds, schoolteachers are going to be dealing with it in the schools. So I want to reiterate my strong opposition to any kind of marijuana dispensaries. This vote you take is probably going to be one of your most important votes, and I and others in this town will hold you accountable on how you vote on this issue. That's how politics work. So I feel real strongly on it, and I want to make sure that I reiterate all those things, look out for the kids. The other issue I want to talk about, I want to talk about the grant proposal. I have a degree in history, I'm a big historian, one of the reasons I moved to Marine City is because I love the water, I love the history, and I want to talk a little bit about that. I don't have a whole lot of time to talk about our history, but this town's been around since the 1700s. The French originally came here, there was a lot of lumbering, there was all kinds of issues going around, the Native Americans have been here forever, this is a beautiful spot where two rivers come together. We formed a city in the 1860s, roughly around that time, and then in the 1880s, when things started really moving, we had shipping, and we had salt plants, and we had a lot of money coming into this town. What did they do with that money? They built this beautiful building, they built this beautiful city hall. There's been Civil War veterans, World War I veterans, there's been people who grew up in this town that have been to that city hall, and gone through historical events in that hall. It's like there's ghosts moving all around that hall, all kinds of people, and it's really important we continue that. Now those people, those taxpayers, and that City Commission, they went ahead and spent a lot of money, and got one of the best people in the state as an architect to develop that building and build it, and I, you know, for what they're asking us to do, a grant, to apply for it, is small compared to what they did. So they put a lot of effort into it. Our town is known for three buildings. Really, the lighthouse really isn't a building, but the lighthouse is one, Holy Cross Church, City Hall. Now in the 18, in the 1960s, HUD, and a lot of people who didn't have a lot of common sense, spent a lot of money with the federal government, and wiped out Algonquin and St. Clair, and their historical area is gone. What are we noted for? Our historical area. What's the most historical building in town? City Hall. So I think you know where I'm going with this. We need to make an effort to preserve that building. Here we got a grant, and I've written a lot of grants as police chief, you win some, you lose some, but you got to put in for them. This is a grant that there's really not a lot that you can lose, very little, but you can gain a ton. So again, this is another important vote for the people on the commission to preserve City Hall. Go ahead and risk a little bit, very little, to get a big gain in City Hall. So I'm a strong proponent of City Hall, and I think we ought to preserve our history, that's what we're noted for. People come to this town, that's what they're looking for, looking for the waterfront, they're looking for our antique stores, they're looking for our history. We're the only river town that has that. So we got to preserve the most important building in town, and thank you so much for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing and seeing nobody else, then we'll move on to item six, communications. We have no communications.
No communications. Well, from the letter that I talked to you guys about last week, you said it was going to be in communications for this week, the one that came from Lexington. Completely forgot about that. We'll make sure it's on May 4th one. We apologize, sir.
Moving on to item seven, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of April 6, 2023?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion?
The only thing is, I asked Jason to make one change on page four, in the first paragraph there, it says Commissioner Hendrick spoke on the grant and the building, and recommended, it says recommended using Monahan, I recommended not using Monahan Company for the contractor, so he was going to add that in there.
It was, I just didn't get the revised out.
So I'm just letting them know.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item eight, consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A through G.
We have motion and support, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
On item nine, financial business. We have expenditures including payroll in the amount of $151,310.55. Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures including payroll in the amount of $151,310.55?
I'll make a motion, we approve expenditures including payroll for $151,310.55.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion?
Yeah, how come this report says $200,569.55?
Fair enough.
It's a great question, I just caught that myself. I have no idea which number is even right.
It's the 200.
It's the 200?
It's the 200.
200,000, right.
So the 200 is the correct number?
Yes.
So the agenda's wrong.
Okay, I will amend my motion to approve expenditures including payroll for $200,569.55.
Okay, a motion and support on the amended motion?
We probably ought to go back and amend the agenda, too.
We need to do that, too? Go back to the approval of the agenda?
I think we can vote on this, but...
Vote on this one first, vote on this as a roll call, please.
Okay, roll call vote?
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Carry.
Now we could use a motion to go back and amend the agenda to reflect the number that you just voted on.
Yeah, I think I was the one that made the agenda motion, so I will again amend my motion to not only include 11F, but also correct the expenditures number from $151,310.55 to $200,569.55.
Got a motion and support on the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Back to financial business on item nine C, the preliminary financial statements. Do I have a motion to approve and receive the preliminary financial statements?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. On item 10, the public hearing on the MEDC CDBG Public Spaces Grant. A notice is hereby given that the City Commission will conduct a public hearing at 7:17 PM to receive public comments on the MEDC CDBG Public Spaces Grant. Please limit comments to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
I just want to bring you up to date on what I talked about last time. Carol Bublitz, Sarah Jones, and local person Jackie Rabin were all associated with the Michigan State University Extension Programs, toured 300 Broadway with me last Friday. Michelle Nixter gave us a tour on every level, which was wonderful. We then had a meeting to discuss all the possibilities for the public use of the building. All of my guests were extremely impressed with the layout of the building, and already began selecting the different areas that would be suited to the various uses that the Extension Program offered. We talked about nutrition and cooking classes, pop-up pantries, Tai Chi classes for stress, and Lake Shore Legal Aid scheduled meetings. Carol said that in many communities have already been taking advantage of all these public programs offered, because they had appropriate space available. She was really pleased to see that these programs could finally be available to Marine City residents. She followed up our visit with a letter with even more suggestions. Briefly, these included nutrition and cooking classes for preschool and through teenage years. These are offered for seniors at Washington Life Center, a personal wellness center for moms and babies, and possibly a scheduled visit by the Community First Health Center to talk to residents, weekly meal planning area, and a coupon swap club, food safety classes, a meeting place for support groups, school tours, dance classes from the 1800s era, acting or improv classes, water safety for the river, shuffleboard indoor and out, and Y on the Fly from the YMCA. She provided us a wonderful letter of support for the grant that we are seeking. Today, I spoke to Josh Chapman, who is the CEO and President of the YMCA in Port Huron. He's very familiar with Marine City and Old City Hall, he spent a lot of time with his mother coming this way, and he believes it would be a grand place for some of the programs they offer. I was especially interested in those for schoolkids who are underserved in this community. And Washington Life Center already has several programs for seniors. These are some similar programs, and some of them are not, the first one not. Y on the Fly, trained, they describe it as trained and caring Y staff provide all kinds of sports, such as disc golf, flag football, and basketball, and that used to be played in the auditorium level of Old City Hall, you probably know that, and many other games. It would depend on what was appropriate. There can be a lending closet setup where kids can borrow mitts, gloves, bats, and whatever else they need. There is coaching as well as free play. These sessions are bimonthly for 90 minutes each, and I noted, you know, they do it every day of the week in different communities. Then an after-school meal program, this includes the food at risk, where children can get a hot meal to go, or to sit at a table in one of the rooms on the main floor, and sit and enjoy a hot meal. The Y also partners with the Food Bank in Port Huron, and have a close relationship with Carol Bublitz. Under youth development, they have a variety of programs that include education and leadership for kids. Financial assistance and advocacy programs provide resources for various social issues, and they encourage, have others for encouraging social responsibility, and much more, and I don't want to get into all of that. But Josh Chapman also plans to write us a letter of support for the grant that we are seeking. That's it, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Well, I'll just steal a little more time, since I can speak again. A couple of things, as a grant writer who's written many grants, I want to let you know I'm really impressed with the people who are working on this. You know, obviously I'm looking from the outside, I'm not on the inside on the grant writing process, but they're well-spoken, they're well-organized, and I really support them, I think they've done a good job, they put their heart into it, and I'm really impressed with the Historical Commission, being a historian myself, and seeing the things that they've done in town, and they work really hard, and I want to make sure I support them. You know, we're a middle-income, blue-collar town, we have a lot of kids, and we have elderly people who don't have a lot of resources. To have something in Old City Hall that can supply some things for the kids, and for the older people to get into, I think is invaluable. Again, slight risk, big gain, I can't imagine why there wouldn't be support for us, I don't think there's a lot that we can lose, there's a ton we can gain. So thanks again to the Historical Commission, the people working on the grant and their hard work, and thank you for stealing a little extra time, I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Ross, I live at South Parker, and I'm also a member of the 300 Broadway Project. I just want to read you an email, I sent it to, because last week, I mean, the last meeting, I was away during Holy Week, so I wasn't here, but I did send an email in to be read, but I don't know what happened, it wasn't, so I'll read it now. Men and Mayor and Commissioners, I'm asking that you support the Public Gathering Space Initiative, the PGSI Community Development Block Grant for 300 Broadway. Our project fits all the key criteria for this grant. This beautiful building is a cornerstone of our city. Groups have lovingly worked on it over the years, but without the significant investment, it's not been possible to fully bring it back to life. I ask that we go for the grant max of $2 million. You've said that the sale of the, excuse me, 303 Water Street was to be used for a community center. Well, here's our ideal opportunity to make that happen. The money from the sale of that building can be applied as a 10% match for this grant, and then we could have a community center at 300 Broadway, and so much more, as so many people have said about all the projects that could be, programs or other that could be run out there. So please do not let this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity pass us by, please do what's right for the community, and support this grant. Thank you.
Catherine Warner, South Main Street, Marine City. We purchased our home in 2019, so we have no history of what went on prior to that time with City Hall, and what occurred with it, and why it was not restored properly. But I would like to support the moving forward with the grant application to restore Old City Hall, which supply, which simply requires this commission to approve setting aside funds. If Marine City wins the grant, the only then would the current, the current city money actually need to be dedicated for restoring the building. Or I suppose you could always turn it down, the grant funds, and let it go. Having Old City Hall repaired and upgraded would be good for Marine City, its residents could use it, events could be held there, and it could be used to attract businesses to our community, showing that we will be willing to invest in our community, would show a lot to other people investing in our community. And I'd like to ask this commission, what would you do with the building? Should you not apply for this grant? I mean, would you just let it fall? I guess I'd like to know that, because I haven't received any answers, other than what I'm getting from some people is, they don't want to do this grant, they don't want to set aside the money for applying for this grant. So I guess we'd need some answers on that. What would you want to do with it? If you didn't get this grant? Thank you.
Anybody else?
First and foremost, as I said last time, I'm here for my dad. That's his birthplace, and he asked me to do everything I could to try and save it, so that's why I'm here. Today, my husband's cousin from Tennessee came into town, never been here before. He was amazed at the architecture in Marine City. He was floored by the river, but he was just taken aback by everything. He was like, he wants to spend the night at the Heather House, he's going to bring his wife up the next time he comes, he wanted a tour on everything, but he and my husband were on their way up north, for a whole nother mission. But to see someone's reaction that's never been here before, I think as citizens here, we get kind of like, you know, you drive by something every day, and it just becomes partier every day. You really need to see, or be around somebody that's never been here before, and see their reaction to what we have, that other places don't. And to me, fixing that hall is just going to help us as a community to get people to come here. It's like, we're never going to get another Detroit gasket to come here and employ people. We're going to have to try and bring people in for the tourism aspect. And we've got, the biggest, brightest, best-looking building is the City Hall. And as I've been helping with this grant proposal, a big thing that came up was the green infrastructure, and I was kind of shocked at how much of it we could actually do. And I want to take the initiative, as the Chair of the Historic Commission, that oversees the historic district which the City Hall lives in, that I want to look to add to our ordinances that a design guideline be added for flower planting, that first and foremost, you must look at native plants. And I was surprised at how many native plants, I actually have in my own yard already, number one, but it just made sense, because, you know, you don't have to worry about invasive problems with them seeding and causing, you know, overgrowth somewhere. Usually they're beneficial to plants, or not plants, but to birds, squirrels, I mean, it's good for the environment. And, let's see, what else? I guess that's kind of it. So, thank you, and I really hope you support this.
Laura Merchant, representing the 300 Broadway Committee. I wasn't really going to be speaking, but I decided to come up here just to kind of let everybody know where we are. We had the pleasure, Brian and I and Lisa had the pleasure of meeting, I think it was last week, it's kind of flown by, to discuss some of the changes that needed to be made in the grant, which we did do. We did some revisions, which you can see in the grant application, to the expenditures and the third-party cost estimate. In addition, we have the budget... In addition, we have the budget, which is attached. We upgraded the marketing plan, and we also added in a public participation plan and a public participation tracking, which will be updated, thank you, Brian, for doing that, which will be updated with some of the information even from tonight and some information I gathered from Jason and from other, some other people from Facebook and everything else. In addition to that, we, from that, thank you, Brian, I created the marketing plan and the yearly budget, which, these are just numbers that need to be addressed, so they're not included in the draft, because I need to go over those numbers with, with the office before I can, I can submit them. We are waiting on a few items. Green infrastructure is being worked on right now by Patrick Phalen, who is doing this on his free time, which we totally, totally appreciate. And then Jim Kotrell's son, Andrew Kotrell, who works for a renowned company, is doing some other site renderings for us. So, we weren't able to include it, just because these people are on their own tight schedule and are doing these, these items for us gratis. So, just want you to know that those will be included before the grant were, would get submitted if you guys decide to let us go forward and do that, which I really hope you guys do, because we have a great group here, and we've had amazing support. So many people support this project on Facebook, through letters, through phone calls, through meetings, and it could be a wonderful thing for our city. So, thank you.
Anybody else? We have letters?
We have letters to read, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hang my glasses first. "I'm writing to support applying for the grant for Old City Hall in Marine City. I grew up growing to activities there and would love to see these things happening again. Sincerely, Janet Willshire, Marine City, Michigan. To whom it may concern, I'm a lifelong resident of Marine City, and I am proud of the way we have maintained our history. 300 Broadway is a major, all-important portion of that history. It is Marine City. This grand building sitting in Heritage Park is a true symbol of a small-town USA. It would only be right, in my opinion, to use funds from the original Guy Center to obtain the large grant in order to update this beautiful building and have a proper community center in memory of Bertha and Otto Guy. Sincerely, Margaret Smith, Marine City." You give me the long one? Awesome.
I have three of them. "I am writing to voice my support to the grant application for funding for Historic City Hall in Marine City. This is a wonderful opportunity to maximize the significant investments the city and supporting organizations have already made in this building. Historic City Hall must be made whole again so it can return to its original purpose, to provide public space to the people of Marine City. I see many uses for the various spaces in the building, like a larger space for city commission meetings or other city departments, including recreation. Current city spaces are quite limited in size. City Hall spaces could also be utilized by local organizations and private citizens. It has been encouraging to see expanded uses of the park which surrounds City Hall. It's time to get back into the building itself. I am not a direct citizen, but was born and raised in Marine City, and I have lived my adult life in the township outside of town. My children went to school in town, we go to church there, we fully support our local business community there. I worked as a volunteer on small-business downtown development and term in marine, tourism in Marine City for many years. Through this extensive effort, I was made aware just how valuable an asset a building like this is to a community, not only as a public space, but as an anchor of the continuing culture and economic development of a community. Our tourism efforts were rooted in the historic nature of Marine City and its surviving architecture. This building was and remains a keystone. It is also quite unique in the large, larger surrounding area. This opportunity is also unique and should be embraced fully. Sincerely, Georgia Phalen."
Want to take one?
Sure.
Go ahead.
"Open letter to city officials. I can't assume that I know everything about directives the 300 Broadway Committee were given towards the Old City Hall or what commitments the city made when forming the committee, but here are a few of my concerns. One, is the committee really concerned about the needs of low-income families, such as do the citizens want or would they use a community center? I don't recall the old Guy Center being too small to meet the needs of the community. A, the committee and others try to downplay the Washington Life Center run by the Council on Aging, but this organization does truly serve those in Marine City who need a hot meal or a place to go for recreation and socialization. Two, as I asked at the meeting April 6, 2023, what will be the cost to the city, and is the city committing to spend any amount to complete the restoration of 300 Broadway? A, the one estimate for the work was around $2.5 million. Would the city be on the hook for the additional $500,000 for a total of $700,000? From the meeting, one individual stated the $2 million won't fully restore the building. As someone who works in manufacturing, I have seen material prices consistently rise over the past three years, so any estimate you get now may not hold up as the work progresses over the months and/or years it takes to complete. Is the city willing to commit to any cost overruns? Three, has an actual building inspection been performed on the building recently? Another stated if they find a problem, like asbestos, they would then shift priorities/money by not restoring the basement. Sounded like they didn't know if there was asbestos in the building and what that might entail. For decades, individuals have been wanting to restore Old City Hall. People say it's the chandelier of the city. I say it's a building that served a purpose but no longer does. The heritage of Marine City was shipbuilding, but I don't see any of those buildings still standing. For me, a green town square for Marine City residents to use and enjoy would be a better use of grant money. Sincerely, Glenn Evans.
"To the city of Marine City, my name is Amy Boren. I moved to Marine City in 2006, shortly after the city government moved out of our Historic City Hall located at 300 Broadway Street. At that time, there was much debate as to whether the building could be saved, and if so, at what cost and where the money would come from. Over the last 17 years, several local groups have made great efforts to save this building. The exterior has been restored with much brickwork, as well as new doors and windows. Through several local fundraising efforts and grants, much work has been accomplished on the interior as well. The most significant projects include a partial rebuild of the grand stairway and installation of a fire suppression system. The fact that funds have been raised to accomplish these projects is evidence that the people of Marine City stand behind the efforts to save this building. This is a beautiful and historic building made with character and architecture simply not present in modern buildings. It is a crown jewel of Marine City. In my opinion and many others, it is worthy of a complete restoration. It would make an excellent and much-needed multipurpose community center for the people of Marine City. For the reasons stated above, I request that the Marine City Commission provide the 10% matching fund requirement of $200,000 so that the 300 Broadway Committee can proceed with its application for the $2 million grant through the MEDC Public Gathering Spaces Initiative Community Block Grant Program. Sincerely, Amy Boren."
Come here, what you got?
Two lengthy ones.
Take a break.
Thank you.
"Reference the CDBG grant for Old City Hall Heritage Park, April 6 meeting. I'm writing this letter to add my comments about the proposed application of a CDBG grant of $2.2 million for Marine City's Old City Hall, to whomever might listen or read this. So, the city sells the Guy Center, Old Community Center, stating that it is too expensive to update and maintain for a community center anymore. Yet, here are groups who are going to ask for a $2.2 million grant for Old City Hall, with the city throwing in $200,000 of that grant, which will still not refurbish that City Hall building enough even with that amount of money pumped into it. Half a million dollars for an elevator alone in that proposal? Come on. They have already put in 1.8 million into Old City Hall, making it $4 million will not help. Marine City citizens voted down spending any more money on Old City Hall twice in the past, and no one listened then. So these groups have had 17 years of fundraising, donations, Heritage Days, misuse of TIFA funds to try and repair, maintain Old City Hall, to no avail, but hey, let's keep pumping money into it through taxpayers' grant money, because gee, some other place might get that money. I say, let some other place get that money and use it towards a much more deserving project. Sorry, grants are taxpayers' money, and the city should not be putting in $200,000 from the sale of the Guy Center into this useless $2.2 million grant as our roads rot away and while other projects around this city are ignored and while residents are struggling to live day-to-day in this country. Enough. The Washington Life Center is our community center now, and it is a great one. One-level building, a gym, and a great place to meet. It welcomes anyone 18 or older to be a member and to utilize its facilities and programs. Great. Why do we need an old building with multiple stories for a meeting place? The residents of Marine City have been more than patient over the past 17 years, or more, about Old City Hall sitting there unused and crumbling down. Please do not waste any more money on this building. Tear it down, use the park space it will provide for a spot for people to actually enjoy. Put Maritime Days Festival there if you want, whatever, but stop wasting taxpayers' time and money on this money pit of a building by saying it's our history. Sorry, but Old City Hall should be history. Thank you, disappointingly, Kathy Rurig."
Yeah, you, yep, go.
Hello, I am happy to have had a tour of your Historic City Hall. It has an impressive amount of space. I thought of many uses as I walked through it, but in speaking with Michelle Nikter, I think her extensive list covers most of my thoughts. But I did tell her I would share my thoughts. A few ideas that may not be on Michelle's list are nutrition, cooking classes with MSU Extension Community Nutrition instructors for preschool, school-age teens or adults. We already provide classes for seniors at the Washington Life Center, but perhaps it would be useful here, too. A matter of balance, Tai Chi with Jackie Rabine, also an MSU extension. A personal wellness center with scales, baby scales, thermometer, and disposable covers. You'd be amazed at how many families do not have a thermometer, which gives the ability to measure height, blood pressure, et cetera, with a complimentary record book like a passport book to track personal information. Perhaps a regular time could be established for Community First Health Center or someone similar to be there to talk with your residents. Provide a library of books for all ages that encourage health and vaccine education. A meal-planning area containing magnetized pictures of food to arrange on a MyPlate board, a similar board to use as a weekly meal planner with food journaling materials, et cetera. A coupon swap club could also meet there. A meeting place for support groups such as breastfeeding moms group, like La Leche League, et cetera. Regular times for Lakeshore Legal Aid to meet with residents. Food preservation, food safety classes, MSU Extension also has those. Provide tours, experiences for school tours. Dance classes for dances popular at different times throughout the building's history. Acting or improv classes, classes like water safety that your residents may need. Shuffleboard court, either inside or outside. Y on the fly, a YMCA program, or simical, similar physical activities for youth. Life skills training such as home repair, sewing, mending, et cetera. I could also see some fun activities that could lend themselves to donations, such as something along the lines of March of Dimes jail and bail in the old jail cells, or donations for chances to try to open the safe. I wish you well as you make decisions and search for funding to restore your Historic City Hall. Should your visions be realized, I hope someone will reach out and talk with me about how MSU Extension can bring more of our programs to Marine City, which you are also welcome to do at any time. Carol Booblets."
"And, to whom it may concern, we would like to tell you about the work of Michigan State University Extension, SNAP Ed. SNAP Ed focuses on good nutrition, stretching food dollars, living physically active lifestyles, and engaging partners to build healthier communities. This helps to ensure the healthy choice is the easiest choice to make where people live, work, shop, play, eat, and learn. Our organization serves groups of people, half or more of whom have low income. We understand that the Marine City Historic City Hall Gathering Center is working to restore this building to serve persons with low income in Marine City, Michigan, and will be open to all. This coincides with MSU Extension's core value that our programs and materials are open and accessible to all. It has been difficult to provide group programs in Marine City due to the absence of gathering places for people of all ages. Should the vision of renovating the Historic City Hall be realized, it would provide a potential site to provide our SNAP Ed and other Michigan State University Extension programs. Thank you for considering the request of the committees responsible for the 300 Broadway Public Gathering Space for a grant to renovate this Historic City Hall. Sincerely, Carol Booblets, Extension Community Nutrition Instructor, and Cheryl Espach, Health and Nutrition Institute Director, both of Michigan State University Extension."
That's it, Madam Mayor?
That's it? Okay. Yeah.
"To the mayor and the city commissioners, my name is Rosalynn Wise, and I'm a member, taxpayer, of Marine City. I would like the mayor and the commissioners to support the $2 million grant to restore Old City Hall. I also would like you to use 10% of the proceeds from the sale of 303 Water Street to be put towards the 10% match of the grant. After listening to numerous city meetings, this is an opportunity that the city should not take lightly. It will benefit all community members, visitors, and will be a prosperous endeavor that will continue for many years and give back to the community monetary-wise. Restoration of a state and federal historic, historical building profits everyone who lives and visits here. All of you should be on board with this grant, and thankfully for all who worked to bring this incredible idea to Marine City, to a great future for Marine City. Rosalynn Wise." This is from Ken Jaylee. "History is a record of the past. It is clear example of people, organizations, events, culture, beliefs, social norms, architecture, and knowledge. When history is reviewed, we, as in all people, learn from our past, make decisions for the present and the future, and take advantage of past successes while avoiding past mistakes. In recent years, many of our society have turned to erase parts of our past by removing records, destroying monuments, and changing names. It has even gone so far as to cancel laws. This is a serious mistake for our children and our children's children. Old City Hall is a very important part of our history. The funds are available. We need to demonstrate to future generations that the founding fathers gave us so much by their sacrifices. We value and honor their contribution and their examples. It's time to demonstrate not only our appreciation of the founding fathers, but also our support and our hope for the future generations. This cannot be accomplished by erasing our past and ignoring the next generations. I strongly urge the council to pursue federal grant money to renovate Old City Hall. Ken Jaylee, Marine City."
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing, seeing none, and no other letters? We'll declare the public hearing closed at 7:48. Now we'll move on to item 11A, unfinished business. The MEDC CDBG Public Space Grant Discussion. An open discussion. Can I get a motion to approve the submittal of the MEDC CDBG Public Space Grant?
I'll make a motion, excuse me, that we approve the submittal of the MEDC CDBG Public Spaces Grant Proposal.
Okay. I have a motion and a support, and now discussion.
Within this motion, you have to specify where we're getting that money out of, which is the general fund.
So I will amend my motion to specify that the matching funds will be pulled from the general fund.
Okay. A motion and support on the amended motion. Discussion?
I'm always the one with a lot of discussion. All right, first of all, I want to say, it is a beautiful building. We all want to save a beautiful building. But I still have some issues, unfortunately. I asked some more questions after we had our meeting. The grant application has to be complete tonight for this hearing, according to their answer. I don't know if you guys had read those questions. I sent a bunch in just to make sure, to cover things. So whatever you have tonight for this hearing, that's what's got to be turned in. So I'm disappointed that you don't have the extra stuff. It can't be added afterwards.
Why?
It's here.
It is, it's a draft.
It doesn't matter. Let's see.
Well, Chelsea's, I mean, Howell's in violation, I mean.
Yeah, I would be in violation, though, for the public hearing, because they all had read on.
It's not the draft. It's the, it.
They were, Howell was incomplete. It did not have-
No, what I'm saying is, the stuff that you want to add that you haven't gotten, that's what you can't add. What you've presented tonight is your application, and it's in here that it had to be complete. The application must be complete and available for you at this hearing, on number seven here. So all I'm saying is, the things that you have for the green space and the other things, those are the two things that you're not going to be able to add because it had to be attached to this. You understand what I'm saying?
Howell did not have any of that attached.
I don't know what they, I don't know what they had when they did their public hearing. I just asked the question and asked what they're saying on the question, okay? I mean, I don't make the rules, I'm just trying to ask and understand.
But that was one on the site.
Into the estimates, so that means, I mean, they would be looking for those things?
True, but all I'm saying, he says here, the application must be complete, available for you at the public hearing.
There are only renderings, not allowing us to add the renderings to the grant. We have till the twenty-eighth.
No, you don't.
We discuss this, yes we do, we have till the twenty-eighth or five o'clock to submit the grant.
I'm reading you the question that I asked.
Where do those questions come from, Lisa?
From the Michigan Economic Development Corporation.
So you asked the state?
I asked the people that put on the grant. These are the ones that you can submit. I asked a bunch of them, so I asked one, just so people can understand. They haven't changed since I asked any, because I double-checked today. So, the CBDG grant, you can submit questions and they answer, and there's pages of them here for everybody asking questions, which is really cool. So, I asked a couple things. I asked, if the CBDG money is used to rehab a historic building, can the building ever be sold? Just a question, because we always have to ask these. It said, yes, but if the community were to sell the building, the disposition of the improved asset would trigger the potential repayment. So if we ever had to sell the building, you'd have to pay the grant back. That's the question.
Maybe. It's not a, it's not a hard rule.
So it could trigger-
Well, it said-
No, it's not a hard rule on repayment.
It would, it says, the potential repayment portion slash or all of the amount of CBD funds that were invested in the project. So, it says, CBG funds cannot be used, well, that's the municipality buildings.
Yeah, it's definitely a could.
Well, it could, but I mean, there's so many of them.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So, again, you go, can we, here's another one. If a community uses the money to rehab a building which they cannot charge for, can they create a foundation and direct donations to that foundation? The project cannot include space where there would be any cost to rent or utilize the space that could be a barrier to utilization. If donations are made, the amounts generated would be considered CDBG program income and may have to be returned to the state program. I'm just asking the questions to make sure that we follow everything and we don't get into any issues of, because I know people talk about a foundation, and can we donate, and all that. I just want to make sure that we're clear on all this stuff, so we don't get into any issues with these people. Then I asked, if a community gets a two million dollar grant and the costs come in much higher, and we don't have the funds to complete it, will they be required to return the grant? If upon project bidding, costs come in much higher than anticipated, the MEDC staff would work with the UGLG to determine the best course of action that may include agreed-upon scope changes, or as last resort, the return of the grant award to MEDC if we couldn't finish it. That's a concern, okay?
I think the scope changes answers a lot of what we had agreed could be done.
I understand, but I think they were important questions, and they're questions that, you know, everybody needs to understand how this grant works, okay? As far as the costs, the project is not expected to be fully engineered, however, all project-related activities will need to be identified and sufficiently designed in order to provide for satisfactory, accurate cost estimates at the time we put this in. There's tons of questions out there, I would always ask people to go look. So anyway, that's some of the questions that I asked. The other thing is, I did go out and I found Friends of City Hall's business plan. Great business plan, it's out there, they did a lot of work on this. Now, this was done in two thousand seventeen, and their estimated cost for the interior is three and a half million dollars. Okay, so I'm not saying anything other than I'm concerned about the cost. So then, let me get your latest-
Serving on Friends of City Hall, I can tell you that the Friends of City Hall interior was vastly more ornate and different interior than the one-
It had a full kitchen, it had a lot of different things, and it was set up to become a city, to bring the city back in. There were rooms, there was a lot of, so it is vastly different.
The only question, so I looked at all your cost things, okay, so, but there's some stuff that kind of fell out, so I want to ask you that. It says in this part that we're doing a parking lot, but that's not in the cost. The roof now no longer is in the cost, exterior brick is not in the cost, mold, furniture, and I'm not sure on the bathrooms, but there's no kitchen in the costs. Okay, so, so anyway, it comes in whatever. So then I saw that you guys got a letter from the Monahan Company. So the Monahan Company, he provided the preliminary opinion of construction costs for the renovations to the proposed three hundred Broadway public gathering space project. Based on previous iterations of the design and our recent review of the budget, we can certify that the project in its current design will have design, engineering, and construction costs in excess of the two point two million. So I guess, my question's going to be, if we get into this, and it comes out much higher, how are we going, since if we, if we do this project, just so everybody knows, you cannot charge for the space, you can't rent it out, even in the lawn, we can't rent out the space for events, we can't rent out for weddings, we can't rent out any of it. If, those are the conditions of this particular grant, okay, because it's supposed to be for low income and free for everyone. So the problem becomes is, how do we try to make money to keep the building going for the future? The other issue is, if this comes in much higher, that's my other concern, is how are we going to deal with that, to try to still pull this off if we do get into that? I guess those are, those are some of my questions. I know we kind of talked about it, I know you guys said that you would try to cut back if it came in higher, but with some of those other things coming out of the costs, I mean, and-
I can address Monahan, because I was on the phone with him, and we've been working on this for a week.
Yeah.
So, Monahan is the original company that did phase one and phase two of the building. So he worked with Newman Smith, who did the architectural drawings, they completed phase one, and he had all the cost estimates for phase two. In talking to him, doing modifications, removing things, adding things, these are the numbers he came up with. This is putting into the Davis Bacon, everything is included in there. There are things that can come off of it, there are some things that can be removed if we needed to, to modify a couple things. Like, for instance, landscape irrigation's on here for sixteen thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if that's needed, I mean, this is something that could come off. So, there is no kitchen, I mean, we took off appliances, was on here, we took off, you know, so-
Well, how about the roof and the parking lot?
The roof does not need to be done. So I did talk to Mike, they threw that on initially, because when we were coming up with cost estimates, we needed to come up with the money. The roof is good, it has ten years on it, Zimmer came out and looked at it. Flashing needs to be done on the water tower.
Okay.
Absolutely, there is some tuck point that needs to be done on the tower. So that is also part of the masonry work that's included in the third-party cost estimate. But these are real hard estimates. He went through, updated, added whatever, twenty-five percent here and there, added on everything that he needed to do. I mean, they're very familiar with writing for grants, and he worked alongside with Newman Smith, the architect, the engineering cost. Newman Smith came in with that number, that's a hard number, because he will do it for us, because a lot of it was already done. So there are certain points, parts of this, that we can use that were already done by the architect.
Okay, how about the parking lot?
The parking lot, in talking to Mike, we talked about taking out originally in the plan, was just to extend the parking lot and put asphalt, okay? So, in the green infrastructure is permeable and asphalt, so it's included in here. So according to his, what he quotes out, it's permeable and-
He quotes out, he quotes, he quotes the basketball, the basketball court, I mean, I'm kind of wondering if you could twofold use the basketball court as parking lot?
Well, that's what, okay, so that's exactly what we talked about. So the extra section onto the back parking lot is going to be a half court. So basically, all it is, is a net, and it's going to be striped out.
Okay, so, but-
So it's not a pool.
I know.
But that's something that is, that is something that, that Patrick Phelan is working on. So he did beautiful design, but we asked him to put park benches in, and we asked him to please add the extension of the parking lot and basketball net.
Got that one, got that one. I know you're using that one picture, you might want to put a note on it, the one, let's see if I can find it. This one, for the first floor, even though that was the original city office design, which we're not using, you might want to put some type of little footnote in there that this isn't the plan, as far as I know, because that was when we were going to move city offices back in there. So I just don't want them thinking this is, you know, you might want to just put a note in there, something to the fact that even though this shows us it was an old design and now it's going to be more open space or something, just so that they understand that. Otherwise, all I'm saying is, you're going to people that have no clue what our business is, and they haven't been there, so if you don't tell them, they're going to look at this and they're going to go, oh, you're putting in offices.
Okay.
And I know that's one of the things that they worry about, that we're doing it for office space, okay?
Well, it can't be for government office space.
Well, but that's what this plan was for.
Right.
Government office space. So all I'm saying is, you just want to put some type of notation in there so they know that this is, you know-
The old design, yeah.
Correct.
That was when it was supposed to be city offices.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's most of the stuff. I just, you know, the only other thing is, is I know how important this is. The other thing we have to worry about here is, you got to understand that the city, as much as the city would love to put money into that building all the time, we just did our budget in the last two days. We're trying to get a grant for twenty-nine million dollars to fix the streets and the roads. If we don't get that grant, we're in trouble with that, too. We also have to upgrade our water plant, our sewer plant. We're buying more equipment. We just had to get a truck, or a truck's going to come, he's ordering it, that truck is a two hundred thousand dollar truck. So, this still is a business, as much as everybody wants to do all these things, we also have to worry about this city and how we manage it. So all I'm saying is, if we plunk in this two hundred thousand, I hope nobody expects that we're going to be able to put a whole lot more in because of the issues that we're having. I applaud you guys, the historic group, for coming up with the sixty Gs for maintenance, but-
That's barely a start, that's what we have now.
Correct.
But we're going to be putting a lot more in.
Well, I hope so, because that could go in one year with this building and maintenance.
No, oh, I realize that. I want to see, we're going to try and grow that to five hundred thousand.
And that would be wonderful, because-
Because that's what you're going to need.
We are. The problem we're having is, we're just, right now, our books are in a mess, we're trying to figure out where at. We spent two nights on that budget trying to balance that for this year, not even knowing if our figures are good, because we have to reconcile everything else that's in there. So the city, you know, we have the money to try to do this, but all I'm saying is, to try, if it comes in way higher, that's my concern, because I don't want people getting their hopes up, and then we don't have the money to try to do it based on the mess we're in, you know, okay?
I get that.
So, that's-
I have to call in favors from everybody. We will get it.
The commission would need to approve any additional dollars anyway, so whatever it was, it would come before us.
Well, we would, but all I'm saying, Brian, is, we don't have a lot of money to expend here with all the stuff that we have. When you're looking at, and we're hoping we get that grant, he won't know till October on the twenty-nine million. The only thing good about that grant, the twenty-nine million, is supposedly the state will cover seventy-five percent of that. So that means we only have to do a portion of it, quarter of it, and then we'll have twenty to forty years to pay it off. But it's a big expense, and that's just the roads and the streets and the infrastructure. That doesn't cover the water plant and the sewer plant, and those are two more areas we're going to need. Things are growing so bad for our cities, like the fire department is another one. Can't get people, we're probably going to have to start, all the departments are going to have to start looking at full-time people, and we're probably going to be looking at millages, because nobody can afford it. But you don't have fire departments like you used to, where the guys all used to work in town, and they used to be here, and they could go on the calls. These guys are struggling, so it's all these additional costs that we're struggling on, and unfortunately, that's why that poor building has sat, and the city hasn't put the money in. We had the two thousand eight collapse, and then we tried to come clawback, you all know, you all have been doing the same thing, trying to clawback to get the money back, and it's just been tough. So, this is, this is good, I just want to make sure that we don't get any issues with them on any of our stuff, you know? And, let me see if I had anything else. But the biggest problem is, the biggest problem we have is not being able to make money, you know, and not being able to take donations, and worrying about that.
If somebody wants to make a donation to the endowment, they're more than willing to do so. We can't require it, but if anybody wants to-
No, you can't.
Correct.
And if they want to donate that to the city, that's their business.
You just have to be careful how you're donating, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
Because technically, you know, like if we have a wedding there, we can't charge for that wedding. We have any type of issue in there, whatever we've used this grant money inside and out of that building, you cannot charge for those functions.
And a nonprofit?
Even a nonprofit.
Because then that would be, that would involve a non-profit.
Well, that's what I'm concerned with, too, because I know they have a big craft show coming up. It says in here, even if a nonprofit group, and it says, even if it's nonprofit. That's why I say, if you go to the CBDG grant page, and you go to the block, this block grant, and you go down a little bit, there's a whole thing of questions and answers that all the communities, everybody's been asking, and it's very interesting, but this is how they're following things. And they'll send somebody out, if you get the grant, they'll send somebody out here to go through all this stuff.
Right.
And look at everything.
They're actually designed to aid you, but-
What about why?
The historic district, because it sits in the historic district.
If you use money for the park area around it, you cannot charge.
Whatever, let me finish.
Okay.
I was going through, looking at where I put in, with the green infrastructure, I wanted to have that sign guideline. And under item one point two one, in our ordinances, we are allowed to manage gifts and grants. Could the historic district commission be able to manage that in a way?
That's a question that, if I were you, you can go in there and you click on the thing, and you can submit that question, and they'll answer it.
Okay.
That's the best way to do it, is get the question answered right from them.
All right.
So yeah, there's a little link, you just click on that, send your email, and they'll post it within a day or two, I think it only took a day, and they'll post it out there with your answers. But that's the best way to do it, because basically, every question so far to that effect is, no, you can't, you can't do it.
I see what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So Laura, go ahead. So if we were to get this grant, and I think you've touched on this before, and like you had just mentioned, there is somebody that would come out, or there was somebody that would guide along, so would look at all of these things that have been listed and discussed tonight, to make sure that we're following along with the grant guidelines, what they're looking for in that. So some of these could, would, possibly trigger. They would guide us on that, to steer us in the right direction that we would need. So we're not flying blind on our own, or trying to follow these guidelines, or somebody with us step by step.
Right, and they'll be able to answer questions-
And they'll be able to answer questions. Right now, like, we can't get a hold of Chuck on the M E D C who is our podcast person because we are only allowed to go to the questions.
Right.
We can only ask the question till everybody sees it and everybody is there, you know? So there are certain things that we can't really get answers to, or they're kind of, they're not real direct answers, so.
Well, you gotta keep trying to figure out how to ask it.
Right. The answer is vaguerly, without question.
Yeah, you gotta sit there and think about it when you, but yeah, it says right here that, um, you'll have an M E D C, C G A administer for the project.
Yeah.
And you have to pick from, I think, their list.
Yes.
Okay.
Of people that are, are qualified.
So they'll help.
Right.
Steer us away from those cracks we could fall in and these problems.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
It is.
So we do have, I know, I know you don't like Monahan, but, you know.
No, I don't.
I have to say, I know, but.
Just 'cause of past problems.
I know, so we, we, yeah, so if we get, let's hope that's a problem we need to talk about. That means we would get the grant, you know?
We definitely need a lot better contract than we had the first time around, but.
You know what he said, is, he's wonderful. Michael Burke has been amazing in his whole process with me. They have both really dedicated a lot of their personal time and effort.
Yeah.
So.
It's, it's just that whole issue with the windows and at the end and it didn't end well the first time.
Some of the contractors they used, you know, like Poe was really good, so, and they still were, so.
Correct.
I mean, those are problems and things that we can talk about if, if.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's a tough road to get these things, but all I'm saying is I, I just, I just want people to understand how this goes and, and the complications with this particular one, 'cause it's kinda like the Marina. We did the Marina and then in the back, you can't charge for the boat slips. Causes us trouble, but we still gotta do all the maintenance. We still have, and, and even our DPW guys, they can only do so much over there and some of that maintenance is gonna have to be hired out. You guys know that. I mean, the brickwork and some of that, they can't do that. So we'll have to hire them. Then you gotta consider if you got ten years left on that roof, within the next ten years.
Right. It has to be budgeted, I mean, it does.
Yeah.
It is something that.
Yeah.
It is investing in your community, but it is an asset. So that is one thing.
Yeah.
I'm sure at some point down the road, it can be sold. I can't imagine they have a.
Oh, no, you, you can sell it. It just said that you may have to pay some of the grant money back.
Right.
From the sale.
Which is quite obvious, they don't want to invest two million and then the next year you sell it for.
Well, I understand, but if something comes up and something happens.
Sure.
You still have to be knowledgeable enough to know what happens if we do have to ever sell, you know? I mean, a couple of years ago, there was a deal that was going through to possibly sell that building. So, you know, um, those are the types of things. I just like to ask the questions and I like them to answer. So yeah, if you have any questions, submit them, 'cause like I said, they are very, very good about it. And maybe submit one about whether you can add that stuff after this public hearing.
Okay.
So Lisa, on that one, I, I did have some experience on that one.
Yeah.
If, if, if what you're adding supplements to the components of what you presented at the public hearing, um, I had heard that that was okay, if it's just more information. What they don't want is you to come in here.
Yeah.
And, and, and talk about X and then submit Y. So if, uh, and that's probably true for most public hearings, we want the accurate information. So if what you're thinking about is in furtherance of something that you're already proposed, I think you should ask that question, 'cause I think, I think they'll allow it.
Yeah, I, I did talk to the architect about that, because I, I talked to him about the fact that we were lacking some of the renderings.
Yeah.
And so I, I am under the understanding that we can add those, it's three, three, one rendering, one, one infrastructure.
As long as it relates to something you, you've already got on the table.
Absolutely. It's an enhancement.
It's supplement, it's an enhancement, not.
It's in addition to what we already have.
Right, you're not changing.
We're not changing words, we're not changing anything.
Yeah.
I think, I think you'll get a positive answer.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, it just says that it.
Yeah, and I agree, I agree. You, you shouldn't come here with X and then submit Y.
Well, the problem is, is that if the public can't see some of the material.
A- as long as it's supportive of something they're seeing, I think you'll, you might see, I think it'll be all right.
I would say ask the question.
Yep, I agree.
I think there has to be some gray area, because you can't have your public hearing the same night, 'cause you might get some ideas or something that might need a.
You're supposed to have the project pretty complete by the time you have the public hearing. But the safe thing to do is ask the questions. Ask as many as you can, 'cause like I said, the one day I went up and I whipped off eight, I, I found a next one, I combined two and I whipped them all and within the next day, they had the answers out online.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, well.
It was well timed.
It was very well timed.
The day after our meeting, I put them all on there and yeah, they had them all, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Good timing.
You have to, you have to go today.
Yeah, but it's, it's real simple and it's just an email.
And it works.
Yeah, it works very well.
Yeah.
So, and if there's anything else you can think of, throw them in there, everything, you know? So.
So one question, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
So the renditions are possibly being able to, because they're in the X and not the Y, they're able to, but I do have a question, Commissioner Hendricks.
Mm-hmm.
And all due respect, if, when did you ask these questions to them?
The day after we had our meeting, 'cause I had concerns.
So I have a question to you. Why was that not communicated to Commissioner Ross or Laura Merchant?
I figured they'd look at them online.
But.
Like I do.
Assume we all know how it's spelled, okay?
Yep.
So you working with them digitally on Wednesday night.
Yeah.
You did not communicate properly to them and you set them up for a fail tonight.
Didn't set them up for a fail. I assumed.
You possibly did.
I assumed, because we're all looking at it. I go out there every day and look, so I assume everybody else should be out there looking every day.
Well.
Because they change every day. We're not the only ones asking questions, okay?
Correct.
So every day, I, I went out today and I went to look and there was no new questions.
Communication is your key up here, that you've always talked about, we should communicate properly. That was not communicated to them.
Well.
So, see, and.
Figured they were adults and they could figure it out themselves.
Okay.
We talked about it before.
I'm, I'm actually.
I think I am, I think I am.
Okay.
It, the questions are there, you still have your, your time. If you ask the proper questions and they allow you to do it, you're good. But people should always be looking at these questions every day. I shouldn't, you know, because like I said, we're not the only ones.
I actually look at, I look at the instructions and the application and make sure that everything that we're doing is right.
Yeah.
I, I read and I will look back at my notes that the public hearing is a draft and things can be added up to the point of the application, submission of the application.
But all, all you can't do, you can't do a one-eighty, that's it.
No.
Yeah, and I don't.
I'm actually, like, you asked me to put, this is an old design and this is an open space, so I'm gonna put a notation on something that's already here.
That's a change.
Is that okay?
That's a change.
Well, it's true.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion with any?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you wanna go ahead?
No. Um, I, I looked through all this and I'm, I'm, you have some really good ideas and I like, um, that you support restoring historical buildings. I think it's great, but I'm talking about practical. So according to the grant proposal, um, you included the Parks and Recreation Plan of twenty, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two and the cost estimates were at two-point-six million. According to construct, construction analytics and some other sites on the internet, construction materials rose five-point-three percent in twenty eighteen, four-point-eight percent in twenty nineteen, and between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, they rose an additional fourteen percent, which is twenty-four-point-one percent, or six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred dollars. So now we're up to three-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred dollars, if the original estimate was correct. Labor costs are expected to increase because of the aging workforce and smaller talent, so that was, and this was just construction materials, so the labor costs could also go up. So we're locking at quite a bit of money. Also, um, the quote from your grant says, "Long-term maintenance, capital repairs and cleaning costs for three-hundred Broadway and Heritage Park will be included in the city's annual fiscal, fiscal budget." We didn't get any figures. Who's approved this? Um, I haven't seen any figures, we just did the budget. So if this is for twenty-four, twenty-five, we should be seeing those figures pretty soon, because I don't see how we, after doing the budget, are gonna be able to pay for things if we can't charge rent. We have expenses, the capital improvements, the cleaning, if you have events in there, there's toilet paper, paper towels, soap, whatever other things that come along with it, cleaning up after the party. And since we can't charge, how are we gonna pay for it? Volunteers are fine, donations are fine, but we're talking about a lot of money every year, all right? 'Cause you just said sixty thousand could probably be spent in a year. Means we don't have sixty thousand dollars more a year to spend. So if your fundraising falls short, who's gonna pick it up? I, I just have questions about it, all right?
So there is, right now, there is money budgeted for building maintenance.
But not.
It includes the police station, it includes this building.
It's only, it's only fifty thousand.
I know that. So is that a fair amount?
But we don't use twenty-five of it every year, so.
Well.
Is, is it a fair amount? Is it something that needs to be? I mean, can you maintain this building for fifty thousand or in five years is it gonna?
That fifty thousand's supposed to cover all our buildings.
I know that. So I think there's a, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of things that, I understand what you're saying, I don't know where you want me to start. You want me to go back to the two-point-five million, because I think when that cost estimate was, because that was actually the amount of money for the in, phase one and phase two of that building.
Well, it's included in your report and there's no qualification for it. So that's what I'm going on. And you're saying it's gonna cost two-point-two to do whatever. Where are you getting the extra two-hundred-and-thirty thousand? Because according to their plans, that you seem to ignore.
I'm not ignoring the.
It's one-point-eight million that you're asking for and we're contributing two-hundred thousand out of the general fund, that's what we agreed on last time, not the guy's center money, which you didn't mark.
We got it.
And so where is that other money coming from to complete the project? If you're saying it's gonna cost two-hundred and, or two-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand some dollars?
So two-million-dollar grant, two-hundred-thousand dollars from the city, twenty-six-thousand dollars from the historical society.
But you're not reading that right.
No, it is.
They give you, they gave you a, a copy of the correct and incorrect ways of doing it. It was for a million dollars.
Right.
I know we're asking for two, but you should be able to double it.
I did clarify and it is.
With who?
People that I clarified.
Did you clarify it with the state?
I read it, I, I have clarified it and it's okay. I second.
I don't think it's right and so I have issues with that. We're talking, two-hundred-thousand dollars is a lot of money to me. I don't know, maybe it's not to you, but for the city and for most of the people in this here.
Two-hundred-thousand dollars is a lot for me, too.
And most of the people in this city, two-hundred-thousand would be a fortune to them, at least half the town. So where is it coming from? That's what I wanna know. And, and we just have all these extra expenses, 'cause you know it's gonna be extra expensive if you're holding events in there and we can't charge for it.
I am asking for the commission to invest in the community, in investing in, in investing residents, invest.
I understand that and it's a great thing. Where, how is it gonna be paid for, is what I wanna know. And what most people out there wanna know, how are we gonna pay for it? 'Cause they've already turned down twice.
And I think the commission and, and planning or whoever is going to have to go and go out to help.
But that should've been done. Um, all the other ones I read, they planned for a long time, they figured it all out, where they're gonna get the money, the whole community did it and they had answers to those questions. I'm not seeing a lot of answers. Okay. Also, on here where you had the attachments, 'cause I don't like things incomplete to approve. You haven't marked whether they're, you're, you're entering them, required attachment A, B, C, none of these are marked.
Isn't there a cover page for every single one?
She's looking at the red lines.
Oh.
At the end of the grant.
They have all these things. None of them are marked.
Those will all be marked when it is submitted.
But you had told us everything would be complete, like last Friday when it was supposed to be up for review. And now you're saying it won't be done till the twenty-eight.
I, I have said everything would be complete, because I didn't have control of the two architects that are doing renderings for us. So, um, all the changes were made that was recommended. Um, we added what we've added to it where we could. We went back and, and finished the budget, we got the letter from Monahan, we changed the letter from the disabilities, um, we did, you know, we revised the, the third-party cost estimates, um.
But it's not complete. And you want us to vote on something that's not complete?
It is.
Because there aren't check marks on a page?
Yes.
Yes. You think the grant people are gonna say, oh, oh, we don't care if they didn't check mark anything?
Obviously, obviously the grant.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But it's not complete tonight and you want us to vote on it.
Okay. Is there anybody, do you understand those points?
Yep. Um, where do I wanna start here? Uh, relax, Brian, it won't be that bad. Um, all right, first, I guess I'll start with, uh, the, the crowd's reaction to Lisa not saying that, that things should be complete. I, I don't think it makes a difference, it's kind of a moot point. I mean, as you said, you have architects that haven't supplied renderings. Um, so the fact of whether or not she told you that, I don't know why that was some big uproar and somebody walked out. It's very odd to me. Um, as far as the money, I, I also have concern, oh, I mean, yeah, Lisa sat down with these guys and, and went over this thing and helped with the whole thing. guys and went over this thing and helped with the whole thing. So it's kind of unfair to me, the way that she was treated right there. Now, the state, what, so Rita, you brought up money concerns, I have the same concerns as well. I mean, the state example was pretty clear, that, you know, if you're asking for a million, they give you nine hundred thousand, you supply the hundred thousand. So I absolutely have that concern, because that was very clear on the page. What happens if this goes over budget? Like, does anybody know? Like, if we go over budget, so we are then required to finish it out of our pocket? Like, what actually happens?
If it goes, if it goes over budget, they come down and meet with you and try to restructure your program. They sit down with you and say, we think you should knock this off, knock this off, change this, and then you'll be in budget. So they come down and work, they kind of come down and work with you a little bit.
I can read this one again.
It's even right.
It says, "If upon project bidding, costs come in much higher than anticipated, MEDC staff will work with the UGLG to determine the best course of action that may include agreed-upon scope changes, or as last resort, the return of the grant award to MEDC."
Yeah. They come down and work with you.
Yes.
Okay.
I asked that.
Yeah, I mean, we're dealing with a historic building and with a lot of historic woodwork and such inside. I can see that being a very contentious issue, when we're trying to negotiate with the state about what we should keep in, what we should put out, when we're trying to rehab a historic building like that. It's going to be rough. But, I mean, I, look, I think, you know, it's worth a try. I also think that it should have been completed. But, you know, it is what it is at this point. And as far as the donations, I'm not too worried about that. I think, I think people can get real creative with donations, and we can figure out that part. But, yeah, the ongoing maintenance of the building is absolutely a concern. I mean, it has been sitting around for a long time. There hasn't been a bunch of people jumping out of the woodwork to donate money towards it until this point. And we just have to be careful, careful, careful. You know, everybody, the nice shiny chandelier, we all want it nice and pretty. But we've just got to be careful, we've got to be responsible about this, and not look at it as, you know, a new toy that we're getting on Christmas morning. This is something we've got to take care of for a long time. So I do have concerns, absolutely. I guess that's it.
Anybody else?
My personal opinion is that we should make this application the best we can and submit it. The thought that you can't revise or enhance, as Bob stated, a proposal after a public hearing is somewhat asinine to me. Why would you hold a public hearing if you can't fix your application afterwards? So my opinion is, we give it our best shot, we include the renderings, we submit it, and if the grant committee doesn't like it, doesn't like the procedure that we follow, let them kick it out. It's not going to hurt us if they kick it out. They deny it, it won't hurt us. So let's give it our best try. So that's about all I have.
My only, my only thought on that is, it's, it's not that, it's supposed to be complete so that the public has an opportunity to view it and put in their two cents, because that's why it's supposed to be complete.
But what's the value, what's the value of their input if you can't change it?
Well, how can they give input if there's nothing to give input on?
It's like a, it's like a, you know, because the whole purpose of being here is to listen to these people-
I understand.
And maybe make a change on what they say, based on what they say, like Mike said.
But that's the thing, they're supposed to look at this.
I know.
And they're supposed to be able to comment.
And as long as we're not changing what we're proposing, I think, I think what Mike said is, it's good to hear from the public.
It is good to hear from the public. We need to hear more from the public.
Yeah, it's been valuable.
And I did reach out to those four residents there regarding the basketball, and they were fine with it, so.
All right.
I have the address, sorry, but I didn't get that. But I did reach out to all four, and they were all fine with it. They actually liked the idea of having kids out there playing basketball. So there's only one who wouldn't have to, so that's a little better.
Well, the biggest thing is trying to work out all the costs. I mean, that's going to be our biggest issue.
Commissioner Klaassen, did you have any comments?
I didn't want to go back that far, but I will. I went back that far with that building when the city wanted to condemn it, and I was building inspector, who was the only one that had the right to condemn. And the city walked out of their building and just left it, because they didn't want to be in it, because they didn't believe it was a beautiful building. And I fought that for how long? And I finally left the city, the building inspector. But that building isn't going to fall down, I can tell you that right now. It's lasted this long, and it's going to last longer. It's just a matter of how you're going to, how you're going to get money to do it. And if you can get the grant, you haven't lost it, if you get the grant, then we have to come up with money, which we don't have. But on the other hand, if they don't get the grant, we gave them an opportunity to go for it.
And I think there are more, I don't know if you guys looked at any of those other grants?
We did. It's on the three hundred Broadway agenda meeting for forthcoming.
So that's the other thing, I want to, somebody gave us a, Paul's daughter sent some things, and she found some other grants just in case that can be looked at.
They're not this high, and they require far more matching, but yes.
But, you know-
But there are, yes, like, for instance, we wanted, because we're going to lose the trees in front of the problem, right? So we would like to put a Christmas tree, you know, a framed Christmas tree, which was on the original proposal, but we could be grant for that. So there, it's going to be ongoing. These groups aren't, they're not going in.
And when you, say you get the grant, you're still going to have public input, and we're still going to have to have meetings, because this commission has to approve everything that goes on, and so there'll still be a lot more input from everybody.
Yep, and it's written in there, in the grant, it actually is mentioned that in the grant itself, too.
All right, Commissioner Ross?
I want to reiterate what Bill said. I think we have a chance to right the wrong that the city did. I mean, there's a lot of claim that the city's done wrong by people over the years, I think this is one chance to right that wrong. I want to thank everybody that's really helped and worked on this grant. You guys have been invaluable, and Laurie, you gave me far too much credit, you know, for helping with this stuff. You know, really, all you guys really helped so much, and it was so much appreciated for putting this thing together, especially in the short amount of time that we had to do it. You know, it seems like yesterday that we were watching that webinar, and now here we are, hopefully voting to approve going for this. And again, I can not stress it enough, like Bill said, we're not out anything if we don't get this. If anything, we now have a solid plan, we have a lot of interested parties that have helped to contribute to this, and if we do get it, then we've got all these people so excited about utilizing a space for the underserved in this community that I personally am very, very excited about. So that's where I sit with it. I would really love to see this go through. I'm fine using the general fund, as it was said at a previous meeting. If we want to take that plaque that's undeservedly out there right now and put it in front of Old City Hall, then we could make a resolution to set forth those funds from the sale of three oh three water for that at some future juncture, you know, as it would abide by the will and trust, as so long as that is made into the Guy Community Center. But in any case, the general fund is very healthy at this juncture and can, I think, easily support this. So again, as I've said for a long time, I say we go for it. What's there to lose?
All right, just a couple of things, I'm not going to belabor this too much longer. I agree with some aspects, it's a lot of money, and we'll have to figure out the way to sustain it, should we get it. But I also think this is an opportunity that we can't overlook, being involved and around government and working all my adult life. I've not seen an opportunity like this, and being around in the city and involved through all the years that it's been vacant and all the fundraising, and I can't say enough, seeing all these groups that came together to work on this. And then with Lisa and Laura and you guys meeting, and Holly come, and we had a short time. A lot of these groups that have, cities that have gotten these other grants before, have had a longer lead time on it. I think in a very short time, I've seen a lot of positiveness and a lot of community coming together on that. And I realize the hesitations, and I think that we have to go for it, because if we didn't, I think we'll be kicking ourselves in always, what if, what we could have done. So I know I am for it, and there may be things we'll have to figure out in the future, but I'm confident with a person, if we do get it, that comes with this, that follows along, that we'll be able to comply, we work things if we have to, figure things out. All right, with that, we call the vote?
May I interject something? So I have a question, and maybe somebody's heard this along the way. There was a grant opportunity announced today, let's just say you're short on some funds to do your project. Another grant was announced today through the MEDC. What if you apply for another grant to help finish this project? Is that possible? Can you do that?
That question's in here.
And I believe you can.
Yeah, because Howell has the grant money.
So, so I got an email from Dan Casey today regarding, it's called a RAP grant. It stands for the Revitalization and Placemaking Program. I forwarded it to Michelle, really irritated Michelle, I think she wanted to throw something at me, but-
I think that's, I think that's the one we knew about.
It was just announced today, Dan Casey just sent it to, sent it today.
But yes, you can combine things and do it.
So I forwarded it to Michelle.
Somebody asked that question, and that's why those questions are important to constantly-
So there's a possibility, and depending on if Michelle is up for this, I mean, it's something, you know, we can look for as well. There's, he announces millions of dollars of federal ARPA funds that they want to give out in this grant program, it's called a RAP grant.
Yeah, that's the one.
So, yes.
I mean, we knew it was coming.
Yep.
That's, that's the one.
But other, other communities did have other grants when they were applying for this grant.
Correct. And it does say in there, that question is in that set of questions.
Yeah.
That's why you've got to read through everybody's questions.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
If we win the grant and use the money to rehab one part of the building only, can we use another part of the building to raise money?
That's, that's a problem in there, if you, that's a question.
Well, it said in here that fifty-one percent had to be utilized for-
Free.
Free, right.
But it also says that you can't have other parts of your building that are blighted.
Well, I'm assuming those parts would be finished another way. Say the Opera House.
I understand. That's why I say, go out and look at these questions, that question is out somewhere.
The answer is half. It's half. It's half.
They just don't want any parts of the building to be blighted while you're doing that part. So again, these questions, go out and look, it's very informative. As I say, I look at these every day to see what's out there, and I know those guys usually do, too, so, because I know you guys have asked some of the questions, right?
We have asked some of the questions. We're usually looking for our answers, but-
Yeah, no, well, you should always look at everybody's, because other people ask some very, very good questions, so I look at everybody's.
All right, let's call the vote, please.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rarg.
No, because it's not complete.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank.
Yes, I just want to be very clear, we have to be careful with every dollar that we get if we get this grant. And I can't speak for the whole commission, but I'm echoing some of the thoughts up here. We can't be expected to spend anything beyond what's on the grant, we just can't afford it.
Motion carried.
Just as a point, you got that it was, the resolution was offered by Jake, supported by Bill, and the two hundred thousand was from the general fund?
You would have to vote on that separate, correct?
The resolution's on the next.
Oh, sorry.
The resolution? I think it was, you voted on the resolution with a roll call, right?
Right, no, I thought the, the motion was to approve the submittal of the grant application-
Yes.
With matching funds. Would you also have to vote on the resolution as well?
Okay.
Correct, yep.
With a vote.
With a vote, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number zero zero six, two zero two three, for authori, de-authorizing resolution, which is something needed for the grant, for community development block grant application.
Oh, we got it? Yeah, motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rarg.
No.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Hillfrank.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Brings us now to eleven C, recreational marijuana facilities, maps, and discussion.
I have a question about the maps. The last line on all of mine are chopped off. So what does it say? In on the legend?
Well, I don't even have that on mine.
It says residential plus, and then-
Well, the different ones have, have different ones at the bottom, it's residential ones is school plus.
Is that what it is?
That's just the zoning section.
The very bottom, the very bottom of the legend says, on the last page says WM-nmd, which is waterfront and marine, it's a zoning district that we have. And then NMD, it means that it's within the nautical mile district. So that's last page, second to last page, third to last page.
Those are all the same?
Third page, sorry, fourth page, third page, and then the first two-
Yeah.
Like, the one that has our eleven C on it says residential plus two fifty, and then the second page with all the blue, like, cascading lines says school plus a thousand.
A thousand, okay, thank you. I can't.
It's cut off for me, too, but I just-
It's the scanner.
And I'd like to say there's a lot of blue, I wish more colors had been used.
No, it's when you scan it.
It is a little tough on, though.
Figuring out the places. It's just the some that were, like here, that were within the thing, there's a little different one in here, so, just a little hard to read.
Yours has it, yours was cut off, too.
Planning, Kishman, Chairman Moran, anytime you wanted to start.
I kind of apologize for the maps. I kind of cleaned them up a little bit, but because the planning commission voted to approve these, we could not present them to you tonight. So if you have questions, I might be able to explain a little bit what you're looking at.
Sure, sure.
Pardon me?
I said, sure, it's a, it's an eye test.
The concentric circles are the, are the church and schools, and it goes from two hundred and fifty to a thousand.
Okay.
Having a separate graph with just the two fifty really wouldn't enhance your understanding, I don't think, any better. The state suggested a thousand feet, so you're getting a look at a thousand feet there.
Question, is there not, Bill, I think you know, is there some type of school on Degersie?
That's the, that's those kids.
The Ark, I'm talking about the Ark under Degersie.
Did you guys cover that?
There are outliers, a couple of residences, a church or whatever, that are not covered because the, the zoning goes from a residential out a thousand feet. If those houses or churches or whatever are in an industrial area or a business area, they won't get counted that way. We would have to exclude them separately when we did a zoning.
Okay, but you did know about that?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
In fact, the city clerk was the one that found that out for us.
So there is a school on Degersie?
Yeah, one.
Yes.
Thanks, the discussion was rough. One thousand, is that more towards King or more?
Yeah, I was just about to map it.
True.
Yeah, but Chief Snacks, that's a school, though, for adults, though, right? Adults, though.
Well, I mean, we don't differentiate, do we?
Well, the law would. If it's an adult school, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude it.
What are these lines here, do you know?
Yes, it's only K through twelve.
Okay, good to know.
You had a college during that.
This is the edge of Marine City, I believe.
Right, these lines here, like, what is in relation to this?
It's, it's K through twelve.
So it's going to be-
Is what's in, it's what's in the law.
On this side, then.
So what we're looking at is trying to figure out something at a thousand feet where there might be something located.
I don't understand what this might be indicating that drains. I don't understand what you're asking.
So this is where we're-
You're trying to apply a thousand-foot setback.
The state recommends a thousand.
Right.
Yes.
Let's look at, let's look at two fifty, five hundred, and a thousand.
There it is.
Right.
And we just stick to the state of a thousand.
They ran those other figures, Bill, because the law does allow you by ordinance to decrease the one thousand if you vote to do that. They recommend a thousand, but they also say, if the community thinks it can be smaller, then the community can vote.
Yeah, and this commission specifically asked to see two fifty, five hundred, seventy, and a thousand.
In increments. Yeah.
Yeah, just a note, New Baltimore, they made their rules three hundred for each.
Well, yeah, you can make it what you want, that's just what we asked for.
Yep.
You should make it three hundred and twelve if we want it, right?
Yeah, anything you want.
Make it four twenty?
For some calendar, for some calendar reason, Mike, New Baltimore was crowded this morning.
What's that, I'm sorry?
I said, for some odd calendar reason.
Thank you for laughing at me.
I just told Mike we could have, you said at four hundred and twenty feet.
I just said that.
Oh, did you say that?
I stole my thunder, Jen.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so, I guess-
The school is roughly there-ish, by the, in between this, these two vertical lines and the De-Integration.
So what they had, we're just discussing that, it's just the K through twelve, kind of school.
Oh, really? I didn't hear that.
You guys had said, just the K through twelve?
K through twelve.
Just K through twelve.
So that's the verbiage in law.
Three K, K through twelve, quarter, okay. K through 12, of course, okay.
Makes it easier, then.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen that make sense, yeah.
Okay, so...
So, Joe, I'm having a little trouble digesting this. Was there anywhere on King Road that, I don't know, let's say 250 from the church there? Is there any?
Yeah. The yellow.
Yeah, on the 250, ma'am?
Yeah, yeah. 250...
Right?
No, I think the blue rings are all the...
Well, I'm looking at this map, I'm not sure. This is the 250, okay?
Right, I think that's just residential, though.
No, it covers all that, that, this is marking industrial.
Well, I'm just saying the schools and the, or the churches, the churches on King Road is what I'm concerned about. And I think the blue circles are just all the churches, right, Joe? And the two schools?
Um, the blue circles are the schools and the churches.
Right.
Um, I have one here...
So just looking at this one here, so it's church or school on the very top, and, I don't know, this one. And then if you look at the...
Second page of our...
Second page.
If you look at the interior blue, the very first blue, it, it kind of straddles King Road. Yeah, we need a...
Yeah, but so people can see, this is what we're trying to... The legends are down here.
We need a Elmo, it's called, from schools, it's like, it projects things on TVs. We need that. There's a little camera that you can put documents under, and it goes right on the TV.
Well, on the other side of King Road, you've got the park from the school. The Little League Field and stuff.
Right, I, yeah, I mean, like I said, just, just looking at this, if you look at the first circle at 250, it pretty much goes right on King Road, and it even bubbles out a bit. If you go 500, then it just covers all, both sides of King Road. I guess if we did select 250, maybe we could put something across the street. But, uh, yeah, that's just my question, if there, what was available on King Road.
We do have the Community Mental Health going out on King Road, they have a building. I think that came up before. Is it a possible issue? Joe, the Community Mental Health, they're still going into the old unity?
Yes.
Bus station?
Bus, bus parks, so... And that's, that's a problem with the location, right with that.
And then it's schools, parks, and churches, is that how it works? Is it parks included? Parks?
Thought it was just churches and schools.
Churches and schools.
Just churches and schools, no, it's, Bill, I mentioned the parks, so I just wanted to make sure.
But that park is too close to the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, but keep in mind, you can include parks if you want.
Yeah.
You guys can decide 250, you can decide whatever setback, the state recommends 1,000. You can decide what you want the setback from, because it's your community. They recommend schools and churches, but parks, rehab facilities have been included in ordinances.
Well, if, if I may interject an opinion, I think the first thing you need to decide is whether or not you want to do it. And then decide...
And what the setback is.
What the, what the setback is.
And then look at the map and say, here's where we can do it.
Yeah.
Well, we have an ordinance already in effect, because we opted out.
Which, yeah, which means you don't have to do anything.
We don't have to do anything, but leave that.
Right.
But you're looking for, trying to find a place to put them, if we had to put them somewhere.
Your legal status right now is you're out on medical, and you're out on recreational by ordinance. If you didn't do anything, it would just stay that way.
Let me ask a question, what if somebody tried a referendum? Then that would force us into something?
I think they have until May 2nd.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, we, I mean, we wanted to get this in front of us by, before May 2nd. We were gonna keep an eye on any referendums forthcoming, but obviously they have until May 2nd to do that.
The, we discussed last PC meeting. If there did come a referendum, we would have time, assuming that's what you want, to pretty much zone it out of existence. So...
Zone it, what do you mean?
There's that. Pardon me?
What, what, zone it out of existence, what do you mean?
Well, if, if the, the commission votes to keep the status quo, and we get hit with a referendum, the referendum says we have to do it.
Yeah.
We can then, through the planning commission, put together zoning that would cover the, the map.
Bob, what do you, I mean, it seems like we had to court, we'd end up in court real quick.
Those aren't the exact words we would use. I think, I think what we're, what, what we're saying is that if, if the referendum gets filed, it still has to pass, first of all, and a referendum can, can dictate how many facilities. The referendum can say, we're, the refer, we're gonna make you have five facilities, so, so get five. You still have time, you know, between them to get your own ordinance in place, but once there's a referendum that passes, that creates a number. You can't then deliberately, you know, zone them out, but you are allowed, I think what you meant to say, you are allowed to impose your setbacks to the maximum extent allowed by law. And if that in effect then creates a very small area where this is even possible, so be it. But the state law allows, recommends 1,000 feet, right? It does allow you to come down if you vote to do that.
Has there been anybody, has that worked through the courts, that you're allowed to just zone it out?
No, you should never, you should never have an intent of zoning out something, but you ha, you can have the intent of applying the state recommended setback. And then if the result is, there's just a little area left, then you, you don't see the need, then, then you have to, you know, or if there's a little area left and the, and the ref, and it had passed, somebody, somebody can put a facility there.
Yeah, it seems like if somebody went through all that trouble with the referendum, and somebody puts in their applications, and then we just zone them out, it seems like somebody's taking us to court, but...
Could be.
So we have, even if they file the referendum by May 2nd, we could, and we see it's in there, we think, well, maybe it'll pass, we still have time to, to pass our own thing.
You can get your ordinance going here.
Going, okay.
I just had a couple of comments, I, I did pass out this article here to everybody, which talks about that they broke a sales record, we broke a sales record in Michigan for March, $250 million on pace to break last year's record of 2.3 billion in the year. So we're on pace to, to, to get to over 3 billion in sales this year. That's a 30% increase over last year. As we've mentioned before, the revenue sharing from the state on this was 56,000 per license, per retail license on this. So a 30% increase in sales could mean a 30% increase in that revenue sharing. Now, Brian did mention, well, if there's more licenses out there, then that means less money to go around. That is absolutely true. There has been a lot of issues lately with, with the market, the price of marijuana flower is about $86 per ounce right now, which last year it was 191, and the year before that it was 255. So there's a lot of retailers in a lot of trouble right now, and a lot of them are closing, a lot of them are getting taken into receivership. And if you look at the bottom of, of this article, it talks about how multi-state operators and big corporations are most likely gonna be the only ones to survive this. So what that means is all these licenses are gonna be consolidated. So once they're consolidated, that means an even higher revenue sharing, okay? Now, yeah, we're a small town, you know, we, we, 4,000 people. But be mindful, we've had three liquor stores for a very long time. And oftentimes, for whatever reason, lower-income communities frequent these places more. So do I know if a big corporation or multi-state operator would want to come here? Not sure, but I think it's worth the try. Because as we also know, our water plant is highly underutilized. So we need these water users, we need...
But that's only if you have a grow, not a dispensary.
Yep, but that's what I'm saying. We should allow these grows, because we need the water use. We can, I talked about, about this, we can dictate where the grows go. We can tell, we, we can have retail in Kmart Plaza and grows only on Degersie. So we're not worried about going to VGs and smelling marijuana and all that stuff. I reached out to LaPierre, they did say, obviously, they are, they do have complaints around their grows. They do not have complaints around their retail. Nope, and same thing with New Baltimore. The smell with just dispensaries is almost nonexistent, unless you're actually going inside.
So the grow doesn't get the revenue sharing, though, right? It's just the, the retail facility?
But, but there is micros. So what that is, is, is retail in front, grow in the back, and that you can collect the revenue sharing on. And that's another point I wanted to make, is that, just working through and talking through some of the people on the Facebook groups, you know, the professional marijuana cannabis Facebook groups, their opinion is, the only people that are gonna make it, like I mentioned, are the big state operators and the businesses that are vertically integrated, the ones that have everything in-house, the grow, the processing, the sales, all in-house. So they're not paying, you know, a premium over growers, you know, growing in another spot. Everything's in-house, those are the guys that are gonna survive. So I think it would be a real disservice if we move forward with these to, to eliminate grows. I think if we're careful with it, write a ordinance appropriately, I, I think, I think it can be done without, without, you know, upsetting too many folks. There's also a court approved and admissible device that can measure the, the smell in the air. It has been used in other communities, it's a piece of equipment that a lot of people are really happy about. So that, that piece of equipment can be used to enforce any kind of odor that's coming out of these places.
Do, does New Baltimore or any place close to us have a grow facility?
No.
New Baltimore has no grow, period.
They have no grow.
They, so...
They've got the license to grow, but they can't afford to put it in.
So, yeah.
Because of the equipment, right? The, the recycling stuff?
And you're dumping your, your, your water, your sewage, that has to be treated. It has to go through into the system, so they have to be treated at that grow place before it comes out of that grow. You gotta have it tested all the time.
Yeah.
You gotta have your carbide, or carbon, uh, filters, and they've got it to be changed regularly, you still get some odor, but...
But there's a lot more issues with the grow than just the retail.
The, in New Baltimore, they do, all three of those businesses in New Baltimore are supposed to be grows. There's actually only one business that actually invested the money to do that. But like I said, it's just, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense for those particular businesses to grow at this time, because the way that the co, there's one business down there that's just selling at cost, they're not even making any money.
Yep.
And, and, and that's why the other businesses aren't growing, because it's like, if they grow, they're not gonna make anything from it. So that's what's going on down there.
The cloud doesn't want to grow there, but they want to bring in and process there.
Is that, does that have a lot of smell to it, too?
Process, you're gonna have the same filters and everything that you have for the grow.
That's a whole separate license.
And they, they have the license, they just can't afford to do...
To do it, so the marijuana businesses, the only people that aren't...
And then you gotta look at...
Getting inflated, like everything else, like groceries and everything?
And then you gotta look at the security that'll have to be lit. And your, the streetlights, the, New Baltimore's, they gotta put sidewalks and streetlights, it, it just...
Yeah, it sounds...
And then every other, every other day, I'm sending the code enforcement down because they got illegal signs up because they're fighting with each other. So they take them down, you know, sometimes we go over there and they got the whole building covered with a sheet, like, and you can't take cannabis on any of them.
Let me...
Okay.
Sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
So as far as the, the smell, I just have to ask the commission a question, like, if, if, say, you know, SMR in Marysville there, they, they have a, you know, a paint smell oftentimes outside that place. If, if we were talking about a, a factory going in on Degersie that potentially was painting, would we say, nope, sorry, can't have it? Or would we allow that? I mean, is it really about the smell, or is it about marijuana?
I think factories are...
I shut down a building here years ago.
Not comparable. I think we're looking at something with high tax base, jobs, other things like that, I think that's different than talking about a grow out. And smell.
Go up to Harbor Beach, boy, they got a factory up there that'll stink everybody out, I'm telling you what, it's horrible some days.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, would we, would we say a factory can't move in on Degersie if, if they had a smell?
I don't know what rules are governing that besides the EPA.
Bob, Bob, from a business aspect, you're one of our residential experts on this. And Lake Orion that you represent that has...
Oxford.
Or Oxford, yeah, sorry. What, what's your experience with this as far as, are there, are there facilities still up and going well?
Very slow, one is on verge of potentially shutting down, but, you know, we did, we did the ordinance, they expect, you know, expected a, a lot. We didn't get, we got a couple, you know, three facilities, and they're all retail. We didn't, we didn't do any, we didn't get any grow.
Did they have that? They did have grow on...
Yeah, we had, yeah, we just bumped it down. We bumped it down, we kept out the highest level of grow.
Right.
Sort of...
Yeah, there's like an A, B, and C or something, and...
There are communities who've had trouble with odor, I mean, I don't think that's the secret. There's scrubbers and there's other technology that they're forced to put in. You know, and, and, and Mike, your point, I understand what you're saying, you know, I, I have a client, I got an email, email while we were sitting here. He has a small facility in, in Sterling Heights where he does, he etches off stuff for the auto industry. And, you know, he's got an odor violation of level four, which means detectable, and... So there, it's the Eagle, Eagle monitors, monitors odors. And the, the way you, the way you go about that is in the, what we did in, in, in communities is you make the site plan approval process fairly rigorous on, on those issues. So two things you wanna watch, you gotta watch the water, you gotta watch the waste stream, and you gotta watch the air. That's, that's where the issues are in grow. The water, the water, the waste, the garbage is, is considerable. So Michigan, right now, there's a committee I'm, I'm working on, is whether or not, whether or not the processing waste right from the operations can be composted in municipal composting operations.
Okay.
Composting can be very popular.
Yeah.
So...
Well, it's supposed to be very good.
It, interestingly, it is.
It is. It's supposed to be very good for your garbage.
The state is battling with whether it's compostable from a, from a legal standpoint.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 you know, I think, I think the, the lighting and the noise and the parking and a lot of those issues have been worked through, but water, air, and the trash have been issues.
Yeah, we had a, a heat treat company across the street from the school on King Road. I don't know if you remember that one or not. And it had a fire. Couldn't put water on it, had to get every, every way to go all the way to the cell fridge to get the equipment to fight it. And then when he wanted to reopen, to reopen, it was so difficult for him to do it, to rebuild it, to be able to shut that, shut that top down and drown it out so it didn't get any oxygen, and they moved out of town. But it's a, it was a 10-mile evacuation.
Wow.
So smell doesn't come into that.
I don't know if that's in the plot. Oh, you're saying it's on the map?
On the map.
Oh.
You were saying that you were having, you had, you were gonna create some other drawings or maps? Just out of curiosity.
They're not other, what I did was, I took the, the rings, cut them out, and superimposed them over the, the graphs that didn't have the, the rings.
If you guys determine that you want a certain setback, these maps came from Trevor from, from the county GIS. It's a simple phone call to him to, to get you more detailed maps on a certain setback.
I mean, these things are...
The thing that...
What's the dilemma, what do we...
This is, well, they're hard to read, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Now, this is another one he's got.
Those, I don't think you guys can have, because they were not approved by the planning commission.
Correct, so we'll have to...
Yeah, this is the one that I'm looking at right now. Well, it's just not...
So what happened procedurally is the planning commission approved a certain set of maps to come to you. They weren't the best ones. Now there's better ones, but those weren't approved, so you...
So can we ask to have those approved, so that we could...
Yeah, you deserve to see them.
I'd like to see the...
Yeah, it's hard to make a decision.
What is, like, what do...
Bob, the one...
What is it that you can't see, Lisa?
Well, they're just kinda confusing. I mean, and then this one, it gets so dark, and then it's kinda hard to see what...
I mean, the, the really, this one has all the schools and has the, the bubbles that are pretty clear to me, that one's perfect in my mind. And then there's the ones that are set... And then there's the ones that are separate and deal with just residential.
Personally speaking, I'm not super confused by the maps. The thing that I think is missing is the lots. Because, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't have lots though either, because, I mean, you know, we'd see all the lines coming up off Degercy. Right.
Parcel lines?
Right, so if the parcel lines, correct, what, you know, the numbered parcels that are within St. Clair County.org, you know, our-
Parcel search.
Parcel search thing, right, exactly. The reason why is because, Bob, I thought you told us that it is to the edge of the property, not the building, that the setback must occur.
New Baltimore has done it doorway to doorway.
Yep. And, and it, it depends on the parcels and, and, like, if you take a strip plaza, right?
Right.
Where do you go? Do you go where the strip, it, it has to do with ownership and the parcels that the strip, that the strip plaza sits on.
And not to, not to shoot that idea down, but I think adding the parcels to that-
Yeah, it would confuse it.
Well, well-
It would confuse it for the bigger map.
Maybe we're, maybe we're going around, maybe, maybe what you need to decide so you can focus in on a map is, what setback do you want to focus on? I mean, the only thing that happens when you lower the setback is more space becomes available, probably, right?
Sure.
So are, do you wanna live with the state required or suggested setback of a thousand? Or do you wanna take action and go down from there? I think you need to decide that first and then get a set of maps that represents that.
That's what I like to see, the thousand feet map, clearly. And I looked at them lots on Degercy, and I don't know if, by the depth and the width of them, I don't know if you can get a building in there and meet everything for marijuana.
Yeah.
We can certainly do a separate parcel.
I mean, those aren't, those lots are only about three hundred foot deep.
There's currently-
And then seventy across.
There's currently two open buildings that are ready for lease. Talked to the owners, he's ready to go.
Are those the ones you were looking at for grow?
Uh, grow or micro, yeah, that was the idea, yeah.
Did you happen to, I know, I think it was a couple meetings ago, Jake had asked about DTE, is, is that-
So DTE wasn't forthcoming with a straightforward answer. So I did talk to the actual owners of those buildings, and he is a electrical and nuclear engineer. And he says those buildings could easily take two megawatts, which is enough to power the whole town, he says.
Well, you better talk to Edison, because I talk with Edison every day in two of my units. If you want more power, Edison refers them to me, and then I wanna, I wanna grid. I wanna know what the load is of it.
Well, these are-
Because we're burning out the, the, the grid, Edison's grid, they're burning out transformers because they're trying to pull so much off of it. They're burning out meters off of houses.
Yeah, so, so these buildings that are, that this person wants to lease out were traditionally factories full of, you know, high-power-taking machines, you know, so they're kinda already wired and they've already handled a lot of power.
The buildings can, but can DTE supply the power?
Well, I mean, how would they, I mean, the buildings were there at one point, and they were filled with these machines, right?
Yeah.
And those machines were hooked up to the power lines, right?
They're not anymore. So with DT, may have taken that capacity and shunted it elsewhere.
We're not talking like we're running that whole city, we're just one building.
Well, we are running the whole city.
No, I'm talking about the-
I do lives in every township that I work.
The actual building.
Well, DT was the problem with Gibraltar. It was too, they wanted Gibraltar to be all grow. If you notice now, it's, I think it's pleasant trees or-
Yeah.
But half of it's a tool shop because they had to combine the use, they couldn't, they couldn't provide enough juice to make that whole thing a, a grow.
And to be quite honest-
It's twenty-four hours a day, a lot of electricity.
Yeah, running a machine tool doesn't take nearly as much as you think. It truly doesn't, especially running three-phase power.
Neither do LED lights.
So tonight, are, are we just gonna receive and file the, the maps, review, are we asking, planning to do another one?
Or you, you, without, without committing, you guys could focus in on, you know, what setback you wanna look at and then get a better map of that setback.
Or you mean area rather than setback?
Yeah, the whole area, get all the details.
I mean, just looking at any of the maps, by the time you apply the setbacks, right?
Yeah, this one-
From what I can see, if you were to apply any setback, if you were to apply a thousand-foot setback, it basically deletes, you know, from residential and everything else, it wipes the entire-
Well, you have a small area here, and then for some reason, there's a little blip down here. I don't know why that was like that, but, but you still have stuff out in that industrial area that's off the plank.
So just to be clear, this, this, this map shows setbacks from neighboring residential zones, which wouldn't be a part of our ordinance.
When I'm looking at-
I'm just saying.
Thompson Drive, there seems to be a spot here. I don't know if that's-
By Alger and Bowery, yeah.
By Alger?
There, there are residents on Alger.
Yeah, but-
But it's zoned, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But the residents are on the opposite side of the street, then what's smart?
Right, so you would have to make the decision whether or not to include those residents in the zoning. If you didn't, then-
But if they're already zoned industrial?
Right.
Those houses are zoned industrial.
Right, so, you know, do you wanna put a facility next to those?
All I'm saying is you got this little spot here, is that good or?
It would appear that that little square in there is good.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. I just wanna make sure it wasn't a mistake and there wasn't a line.
No, as far as we can tell, there are-
Well, I know, I'm just looking at a thousand foot.
You wanna put a facility in there next to those houses, that's-
What I'm looking at is if there's a thousand foot, if this spot and this spot are the only two spots.
I think you're right.
That's what I'm looking at.
You're right.
Yeah.
And-
I just wanna make sure that-
You're talking about the spot up by the gas station up there, right?
Well, it's behind, the gas station's here.
That's plain.
This is the, where we have our industrial drive that we can't expand on because there's all wetlands in there.
Yeah, because I, I was there when-
So it looks like-
We did industrial, why, we- The two buildings up, and the state came in and said, you can't go any further with this road, it's in the wetlands. Yeah, and I don't know if you could build on it.
That, it's a problem. They went along Walmart to build on it.
From the, yeah.
Well, Walmart wanted to build there, and they wouldn't let them mitigate that many acres.
They couldn't do offsite mitigation.
Correct.
Correct.
It was too much, it was too large. And at that time, they refused to allow.
And you could have an ordinance that says that you can't mitigate, you have to mitigate in your city or in your township.
So even in a thousand-
Yes, you can.
Yes.
And you can, as a local government, you can regulate wetlands down to two acres, state only regulates down to five.
So to clarify-
We're looking for a motion to, to send it back to the planning commission?
I'm gonna-
A new map for a thousand square feet?
I just wanted to clarify two things super quick, just because they were discussed. One, we wanted to do the setbacks from the neighboring communities because I thought, Bob, you said that some communities had sued.
You wanna respect their zoning.
Correct.
A lot of communities wanna do that.
We did make that request to the planning commission. And the second thing was that, and I had discussed this quietly with two fellow commissioners, the mayor, and I just wanna out what we were discussing for full openness. On the maps, which if the public is looking at wherever it says other tax-exempt parcels, I believe those are parks. And that's, they've, at least in some instances, they've-
Yeah.
Done what we understand to be parks.
That's the park there, that's Lilig Field, that's-
Exactly. So I just wanted to clarify that as well.
I'm looking at the, the residential map, it has the Xs, and it's the two-hundred-and-fifty map, and there's a, you know, a clear white box on shortcut row, or not box, but how much of that, how much of the plazas in there? Do you have any idea? No?
Don't.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we explore-
I already made one.
Oh, I didn't-
For somebody to second.
I didn't.
Yeah, you made a motion, send it back to-
Send it, send it back to the planning commission to have a thousand feet.
That's gonna, that's gonna eliminate everything, Bill.
Well, no, even on this foot, you got a spot right down here. Right on Alger Street, and then you-
Okay, everything, but it's gonna eliminate Kmart, is what I'm saying.
Well, I understand that, but it doesn't eliminate everything.
Okay. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to put, fill some empty storefronts, I mean, that's what I thought the idea was here.
Okay.
I mean-
I was already told by down at Kmart, from two of the big ones down there, that they would leave. They put a, the silly in the Kmart Plaza.
Who? Who said, I've talked to, in, in Kmart?
In the Kmart Plaza.
Some of the newer businesses?
Yes.
Newer ones? Okay, I've talked to, I've talked to Techno Care, he's not happy about it, but he says it'd probably bring him some extra business considering the clientele, but- So, I'm sorry.
The owner, the owner's crap, he doesn't need living here.
What?
There are a firm out in New York.
So we need a second.
The what?
Okay.
There are four out of New York that own that class.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, we're just doing a thousand feet?
We're sending it back to the planning commission.
With a better map.
With a better map to look at.
To planning.
Not gonna look at any other.
Could I add the addendum that in the areas remaining, because I mean, we have it basically, in the areas remaining, could we do a focused map of those two areas?
What's the other?
That include the-
Got the one down here, where's the other one?
When I motion, I want us to stay at the state guideline of a thousand feet.
This, here?
Yeah, this is us, yellow line.
Right, so-
So essentially, you've already got the thousand foot.
Or there's roads up here.
Right.
Map.
Come in or make a driveway.
Brian is suggesting we, we blow up the open area in lots.
More detail.
Yeah.
So we can get a little more detail.
Only for the areas that are wood and anything else.
Just, I mean, because technically, we have a thousand-foot map, right?
Right.
So if the intent is to see if there's even a possible area, then we'd have to blow up those two areas to understand what they look like in detail, right?
Is available in there.
Bill's motion just does what we have, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have this, I don't, I'm still confused, but, so we just wanna make this bigger?
Okay.
That's all we wanna do?
And then not to make that map bigger, make one with the lots on it, so you can see where, what's there.
You wanna hone in in the two areas that are applicable to get a better, so we can see what's in that area. This area, this area.
And they'll show you all the lots and the sizes.
So the motion we have is to go back to planning for, to look at the thousand-foot map, but blow up those available areas in the thousand-foot map, see the parcels more clearly, what's available, what it is.
Okay.
Is, is that correct?
So that's what, we want a thousand from schools and a thousand from residential, both. That's what, that's where we're deciding? As a possible setback, a thousand from both?
That's his motion.
Well, no, I know, this is discussion, right? So that's what people-
I don't mind seven fifty, but I wouldn't go any lower than that.
And what, when you say, so does that, you're concerned with residential and schools?
Yes.
Okay.
So could you do, well, it's the same areas. All right.
Which one's seven fifty?
The seven fifty, it's just a little bigger there and a little bigger there. Same area.
Essentially, it's the same area.
I'm sorry, what?
But it's his motion at a thousand foot, so let's see.
So let's call the motion, let's hold on.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Clausen, are you amending your motion to hone in on the two areas available in the map, or just the thousand-foot setback?
The thousand foot.
Okay.
But, but can we go get a more detailed map of those two spots?
Get a detailed map off the-
Two spots.
Of what's available at a thousand.
Size of the lots, see.
We'll get it figured out.
Building on there, you gotta make the setbacks of the buildings.
Good, so nobody wants to see them in, in Kmart, that's no-go. We don't want them there.
Well, even if you do seven fifty, you're out. Even if you do five hundred, you're out.
We can do two different for school, we can do one for school and one for residential. We can do two different numbers for setbacks.
Well, even at two fifty, you're almost screwed down here with-
That's why I asked, that's why I asked him.
This one's out at five, I mean, no matter which one of these you look at, you're almost out.
I know, that's unfortunate. We're trying to fill some business fronts here.
All right, you got push and then support.
Businesses knocking their door down, Bill. They've been empty for years.
Okay, let's roll the vote.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yeah.
Mr. Hillfrank?
Nope.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Rurg?
Yes.
Oshikari?
The whole point of this was just next.
Jim?
Libin. Yes, I will make sure now that we've got that, we'll talk, we'll talk.
It doesn't mean everything else is dead.
The businesses are not gonna get filled in Kmart, that's for sure.
Okay, on to-
We're good.
Item eleven D, update, discussion, social district and ordinance.
Commissioners, it's not before you tonight, and I take responsibility for that. But the good news is, is we don't have to do an ordinance on this. We just have to pass a resolution, so we're not gonna need a first and a second reading. The one thing I did do is I put your management plan together, which has to be disclosed to the state. And there is a way, like you're doing on that grant, you can ask questions and run it by. The one thing that I don't have in my notes, I think I have in my notes, but I'm not crystal clear that I need to include is, are you going to-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bob, can you move a small, please? Can't hear. Okay, thank you.
Are you, did, we talked about it, but I'm not sure we made a decision. Are you, do you want to propose in your management and operational plan that you're gonna add any amenities to your common area? Are you gonna, and I, I recommend you say no to this, but, because you can always do it, but if you say yes to it, then-
Yeah, you have to do it.
Then they're gonna, we're gonna wanna see it. We talked about, like, you know, are we gonna need picnic tables, are we gonna need extra benches? You know, people drink, they wanna sit down. Or, I would just recommend at this point, we, we put in, it's not a right or yet a wrong. It's not, it's not one's right and one's wrong, just have to make it clear. I would recommend we make it clear, we're not, at this point, adding any facilities because we're creating the social district.
So we could always see how it goes and if we need them.
So I, I would think, okay, I talked to one community, and after a while, they realized they needed to invest in a few more trashcans. I, I talked to one community, and they had some great gathering areas, and they felt some really low-end picnic tables and seating would be helpful. So everybody has their own dynamics as they see how it emerges. The other thing that I was advised is make it continuous and not intermittent. So we talked about that last time, of just having one stretch. The whole thing is the common area, not stopping and starting, right? Because it requires more signage, and it confuses the patrons. The final thing was have your hours consistent. Everybody seems to favor noon to midnight.
So if we do it, you're just gonna do the whole downtown, both sides of the street, all the houses, everybody, it's stuck and included.
Yeah, I don't like noon, not in parks.
You don't drink at noon?
Very, very, very seldom.
All right.
Sorry, I just, just because they're parked.
It's too early.
I think-
It's too early.
Noon is true. You recommended, what, five or something before, eight o'clock, four?
I had suggested you, you guys would be good, probably from three to midnight or whatever.
That sounds more reasonable.
Are we doing a season?
This guy over here, in all these meetings, is looking for consistency and understandability. That's what, that's what we're trying to get into, predictability and, oh, God, chief, I'm sorry, I thought it was noon today. So, no, it's tomorrow.
Ease of enforcement.
No, no, none of that. It should be the same every day.
If it's December tenth-
I don't know if we get that many people in the winter, would we?
And then the season thing is, is the common answer on that was, well, winter, winter has its own impact on people. So it takes care of itself. Not a lot of, most people wanna drink inside.
Well, unless we have an ice jam, then they all come out.
Well, then, then that's why, that's why you live, that's why you live in Marine City.
But they're not bringing their own stuff.
Right.
So regarding point one, regarding, you know, other amenities, bathrooms, et cetera, you know, I would agree, let's not put it in because number one, the establishment that sold them the drinks should allow them their bathroom, without question. You know, they put it into their bodies, they can handle taking it back out. Same with the trashcans, I mean, they should, you know, provide a place, and we need to have it on our sticker that, you know, dispose of responsibly. So that's that. The breakup of the thing, I mean, the map that I had drawn, I, I just took out residences. I mean, we can't let people, we cannot allow people to go on private residences. We can't allow them to go on private property. I think you're just suggesting the, the breakup of the volleyball court and the memorial for the veterans, right? Which, again, I think, I kind of agree, let's- Which again, I think, I kind of agree, let's, again, we can always change it, let's see if people are respectable.
Is that only break, yeah.
But all our parks are separated, because.
I know, I know, I started looking, and I was like.
But once you're in a park, though, you feel like you're.
Drink, no drink.
But it's not that, Brian, it's the fact that you gotta put the darn signs on every single park, because we don't have a continuous park like St. Clair and Algeka.
So you could just keep, you could just keep your sidewalks in the common area. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay that somebody walks down the sidewalk, I mean, if somebody needs a map drawn that I can't walk onto somebody's private front lawn and have a drink, then.
You got other problems.
We have bigger issues there.
Sure.
That's really understood.
Yeah, I'm just trying to cut down on all the signs.
People are going to want to go.
A hundred percent, that's what I'm saying.
At least, that's the point, is, you know, I mean, the signage can get enormous and confusing.
And that's our, kind of our problem.
Enforcement gets harder and harder the more intermittent you are.
But if the signs are up against everybody's fence, you know, from, at least is sensical, right? But when you're putting them in the middle of a park, that I think is what you're kind of objecting to, or at least trying to steer us away from.
So, so bear in mind, it's going to be, you're going to pass a resolution setting up the social district with an accompanying management plan and operation plan. That's the end of your role. The participants are the ones that petition the Liquor Control Commission to be part of your social district, and that's how it'll get set up.
They have to have author sales.
Yes.
Yeah, they have to get.
And they have to agree to follow all of your management.
And they have to get re-inspected, there's, there's rules to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just, they get to.
That's why they don't want to hear from you, Lisa, until you have two people who are willing to do it, and we have the two people.
Yeah.
Jim, with your police chief hat on, would you agree with those two points, try not to break everything up as much as possible?
Hundred percent, it makes it easily enforceable that way.
For now.
Yep.
Omit the additional facilities.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you're aware.
And time-wise, would you be open to a weekend? Honestly, on weekends, I think a noon to midnight would be kind of nice, and then the three to midnight weeknights.
And we're okay with that, three hours, they're going to make or break us.
Sure, but again, I very much respect your.
As long as it's still consistent, we're ending at midnight, start time can fluctuate, yes.
I'm okay with that.
So do we have to still have, prepare a map?
Yes, we have to submit the map to the state.
So are we still using the same map, or are we gonna?
The same map agrees with what we just discussed.
Right.
It does not break up the volleyball court nor the.
So they're now included in it?
Correct. I talked to my son about.
Commissioner, about the volleyball court, but there are kids down there, and, I mean, adults walk through there and stuff, I mean, the kids behave themselves, they're down there to play volleyball. If they're drinking out of a cup anyway, probably, again, bigger problems to worry about, so, I'm not worried about the kids down there drinking.
All right.
All right, good deal.
It's going to be on you, Jim.
So it's going to be on your first May meeting, so be ready to.
Okay, so this was just open discussion to permit you going forward, thank you.
Are we going to have a sunset thing in there, or it's just going to be?
So, so I addressed that at the last meeting, that was relatively new. When they first passed this, it was COVID-related, you know, it was, it was an outgrowth of COVID, so there was a two thousand twenty-five ending, it's, they took that off the table now. It goes for as long as you want it.
But I think we should make a provision.
But you're free to amend.
Okay, I think we should make a provision in to revisit annually.
Yeah, and you're free to. You could have that in your resolution to be reviewed annually and amended if necessary.
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are now on eleven E. The Charter, Section Six Point Investigation on Mike Hillfrank update. So I guess with that, we'll go to Rita and Bill, have you guys been able to? I don't think we're looking for results, I just, if you've done it and need anything.
We did, we did do the meeting and talked to everybody involved.
Okay.
And, what was the thing, and what else do we need to do?
Well, I think the, what, do you need anything else, or can you bring your back, your report next meeting?
I can bring the report next meeting unless you want us, we asked the four questions, and I did all the answers, and I've written it all up, so unless you want us to do something else. Unless Bill has a comment, I think we're done.
And then just, so we would get the copies of that for the next meeting, and then?
Didn't just see it?
We can go over your report, and we can receive and file.
Receive and file, okay.
Okay.
All right. And now on to eleven F, that was the additional resolution of double oh seven, twenty twenty-three, adopting the Eagle Model Cross Connection Control Program publicly owned water systems.
Can I just provide some assistance on this motion? So the motion would be to ratify the decision on this made at the last meeting by way of this resolution.
I'll make a motion that we ratified the decision we made at the last meeting.
On this issue.
On this issue for the cross connection.
By way of the resolution number.
By way of resolution number double oh seven, twenty twenty-three.
Support?
Resolution of adopting the Eagle Model Cross Connection Control Program for publicly owned water systems.
Thank you.
Okay?
Do you still support, Bill?
Okay, motion support?
Bill said he still supports, Jason.
Yes, I got it, thank you.
All right.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yep.
Mr. Hillfrank?
Yeah.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Rurg?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Oshikari?
Okay, item twelve A, new business, the Marine City Little League request.
Madam Mayor, I think I can handle this one. This, this started as a simple Facebook post from the Little League, Commissioner Hendrick got wind of it, her and I began discussions on it. I then went to DPW Superintendent Ittrich, asked him if he had funds available to help in their, in their projects to get new picnic tables out at the King Road Park, et cetera. Initially, we were, we were going to come here and ask for five thousand dollars out of the restricted county millage funds for this project. Mike did some further research, found out he had enough left over out of that GL number, and that he wanted to go, actually go after the full amount out of the standard one for the six thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars, which will purchase the, the six tables. And the one that's ADA compliant as well. So that should cover the cost of the tables and shipping, am I correct, Scott? Yeah, so, so Scott Osterland actually went out and obtained quotes from three different companies, obviously, his, his company got the cheapest of the quotes. I'm going to utilize, it's got cut off for me, what is this? Yep, no, you're good, American Athletic, and I'm looking for, obviously, if you read Mike's memo to you, it kind of explains more in detail, but looking for motion to waive the competitive bid and approve the purchase of the tables.
Okay, and then what was that total going to be again?
He's got a listing.
Eight thousand?
Um, it's, it's, I would, if you could make the motion not to exceed eight thousand would be fine.
Not to exceed eight thousand.
Can I ask how much the other bids were?
Yeah, there, you don't have.
Did I do a thing?
Yep.
They're all in there.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not sure this is an apples, apples quote, but it's pretty close.
So you're already taking care of those?
Correct, yeah, it's in balance of the direct shipping.
Yeah.
So, they all offer standard shipping, which goes from manufacturer to a hub, to a hub, picking on four five trucks. Their two teams are long feature clients, they don't recommend shipping in that way, the direct ship, obviously, we will pay the difference to, goes from manufacturer, on the way truck, comes directly to us, up, up there. So there's no, no high over, or moving them around. If they have them damaged, rather than being damaged, just delays our timing. The company that American Athletic says, based on Stephen, they figure three weeks from time of purchase, we should.
I, I do want to add that I was the vice president of the Little League for years, and I know Scott's been involved for quite a while as well. They do a lot of fundraisers, they do a lot of their own stuff, a lot of good people who volunteer for that program, and really have never come to the city to ask for much. And this is one of those things that Commissioner Hendrick and I got talking about, we asked Mike, there's funds available, and kind of asking to help out the Little League a little bit for our parks.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep, and then you get the damage, and now you got to deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need two motions.
Well, I'll make a motion to, we waive competitive bidding for the picnic tables for the Little League.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hillfrank?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Rurg?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Oshikari? And I'll make the motion that we take the quote from American Athletics, and the amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars to purchase six aluminum picnic tables and one ADA picnic table.
Support.
Motion support, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hillfrank?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Rurg?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yep.
Oshikari?
Good.
Thank you, Scott, for. Yeah.
You're welcome, sir.
No problem.
Long needing to sit through, thank you.
Yeah, thank you first, hanging in there with us. Very nice.
It is. It's safety issues too, as far as going from that to the aluminum.
All right, on to twelve B, city manager proposal contract for Scott Atkins.
Madam Mayor, can I start with that one as well?
Sure.
So I apologize that there was a delay in getting you his contract, apologize that he is not here tonight. He had to take a friend into the hospital for a surgery, so couldn't make it tonight. By the time I got this back today, it was too late to get you, so you could review it, provided to you beforehand. Also provided in the packet was a copy of his resume, and I also have signed here, so let me add something more. The city manager search committee, we all agreed that any candidate brought before you was going to complete a level two background. That level two background is currently being done, almost finished, I should have the results within the next couple days. So before you make any type of a motion tonight, I also have a signed agreement here from him with a conditional offer that contingent upon your vote tonight, if you offer him the job, it's contingent upon him passing his background and a pre-employment drug screen.
And signing the contract.
And signing the contract, yes.
So you want that all in one big motion?
However you see fit.
Can you speak slow? I think it would just be, you move to move forward with the hiring of this person as your city manager, subject to the background check, the other.
Pre-employment drug screen.
Pre-employment drug screen, and the execution of the agreement.
What maps that?
Can you say that one more time?
So I can make that motion if you want.
Go for it.
It's up to you, if you, if anyone wants to steal your thunder, but I make a motion that we accept the at-will city manager employment agreement between the city of Marine City and Scott Atkins, contingent upon those two things, the passing of a level two background check and the drug screening.
And the signing of a contract.
And the signing of a contract, three things, I apologize.
Bill supported.
Motion support, any further discussion?
So, yeah, big time. When we went into the city manager's search selection committee, you know, we, we went through a bunch of things, jumped through some hoops, went to post this online, got some applications, everything else. In the interim, as the public knows, you know, we decided that we did need some help, you know, Jim requested that we reach out for, especially, you know, in terms of office staff and things like that, assistance with the day-to-day of the city. And I cannot blame you, your job has got to be so hard already, to, you know, add this on has got to be exceedingly difficult. When we did that, there was the mention that this person, Scott Atkins, reached out to us, reached out to Mayor Vandembosh, and that he was not interested in this job. And I think it's very important to go through this. As time passed, what I learned from city employees, Jim, others, was they really kind of liked the guy, and that he offered a lot, not only above and beyond what we happened to read in the resumes of the other applicants. But the biggest thing I think he ended up offering was, he really likes this place, and he is from around here, he gets the local politics, he knows all the people in St. Clair County to call. I mean, he just has this abundance of knowledge of not just city management, you know, Roseville, he's been in charge of some really big cities. He knows this area like the back of his hand, he lives here, he lives in St. Clair, won't hold that against him. But he just knows this area so well, and knows St. Clair County, and I think would really be a huge asset. The next thing I'll say is, his intentions, as he gave them to me, gave them to the city manager search committee, gave them to Jim, is that he does not want to be our long-term city manager, but does feel that he's in a great spot to both, A, take us forward for the next several years, get us in a very good shape, and then voluntarily seek a replacement during his tenure. And could even span his tenure out to make sure that we find a suitable replacement. So I see it as a win-win-win, just with his knowledge of the area, him being the best applicant that we found within the resumes submitted. From being around here, many of the other applicants were either from far away or didn't have enough management experience municipally. And having spoken to him at length, and had a heart-to-heart with him specifically about this, you know, hey, man, you're just supposed to kind of come in and, you know, check out our day-to-day and sort of give us a little boost, you know, when did the change of heart happen to, you know, switch to this? And he just said, you know, I, I have gone through a lot of the stuff that you guys are going through, I just have so much knowledge of this, and your town is just so neat, I want to, you know, be a part of it's moving forward. So he's a great guy, I, you know, and what I've talked to him about, he's very much on the same page with how to move this city forward, and I'm pretty excited about it. So again, I just wanted to, for full transparency, make sure that the people knew, because I, looking back, looking in the mirror, I, you know, heard at one meeting that this guy's just going to come in and help out a little bit. And then all of us, you know, looking at it at face value, the next minute, you know, what, oh, now he's throwing his hat in the ring? Again, times do change, and if you, you know, as this progressed with how the city was moving forward, it, people started coming to us, talking to him, saying, you know, this guy is really, really could be an asset, and we really appreciate him, the office staff especially. So I was very impressed with that, and it imparted a, you know, major, a major factor in that, for me anyway, and again, the fact that he will help us move forward and voluntarily will find us in two years, or eighteen months to two years, you know, his replacement made me feel very comfortable. So I just wanted the public to understand that, for full transparency, that is why we wanted to go this route, on behalf of myself, anyway, speaking for myself, within the selection committee.
I finally met with Scott also, and it's refreshing to talk to a guy that's got the knowledge that he has, understands all the information that we have, and he, I think after he got into this a little bit, he decided that, you know, he wanted to help us even more. He just has so much experience, you know, and that's what we need right now, is somebody that can.
I'd just like to agree, according to his resume, he's got so much municipal experience from being a Township Treasurer to a Township Supervisor to a City Manager. I think all those skills are things we need right now. And I met him too yesterday, finally, and, yeah, he came across very well, very personable, and he seems to do a lot of planning and economic development and emergency planning. So I think those are all good things for us, so, yeah.
So I did everything but talk to him and it came out very well. I talked to his background and that, the reports were very, very good.
Yeah, and like we've said before, when he reached out, initially reached out to me, was just retiring from Roseville, had been previously in St. Clair and other places, had long-term Roseville, and initially it was the reach out, you guys need anything, let me know, I can answer a question, concern, whatever, he had been watching our meetings, you know, he was well aware of our situation. And then just something kind of stuck out and then reached out to you and Jim and, and things kind of evolved from there. And like I said, initially he was coming in as a consulting role, that's all he wanted to do, but things kind of grew from there.
Yep.
All the way around and turned out very well. Do you have anything? Okay. So I've got motion support discussion and roll call vote, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Hill-Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Carried. So hopeful he'll start next week sometime.
Soon as he gets everything signed and, yep, I'll be in touch with him tomorrow.
Are we inside of 90 business days?
No.
Business days?
Business.
Oh, business days, yes.
Yes.
See, we made it.
Didn't hear you the first time, Brian, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, on to item 12C, the CED Board vacancy. I got a couple other vacancies too, but right now there's a vacancy for the Business Representative, the Community Economic Development Board. And just to clarify, it doesn't have to be a business owner, anybody that works within a business within the city, correct? I'd ask that question to make sure.
Mr. Davis, can you maybe give an opinion on that? We weren't clear. CED Board Business Representative, does it have to be a business owner?
I thought it was.
It was a business owner or at least a business operator in the city.
Okay. And then additionally to that opening, we do have Planning Commission, three vacancies coming up, the Tifa Board, one vacancy, and the Library Board, one vacancy. And if people were currently sitting on these boards and their time was just up for these vacancies, they have been given the information to reapply if they would like to. The applications and letters of interest for all these positions are due to the City Clerk by Tuesday, May 10th, and all of these will be posted everywhere else we normally do, on our website, in the offices, Facebook, probably, yep, and so we'll get all of these out as best we can to everybody.
So Tuesday, May 10th?
Yep.
Is that, was that always the date?
I know it's the deadline.
That's the deadline. Or, actually, we need to check, because this is Wednesday, May 10th, this is Tuesday. It's still by 12 noon, Jason, 12 noon on the 10th?
Yes, it is a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
I changed the date on that form that I gave you, that's why the day is...
Okay.
But it is a Wednesday.
Wednesday, May 10th, and then you want them by noon?
Yeah, if you guys choose to extend that, I mean, the terms expire, obviously the CED Board vacancy is open now. If you wanted to keep that one May 10th, so they could still make that May, their May meeting, I believe, is the end of the month in May, so you guys could still determine at your May 18th meeting to appoint that one. If you wanted to push the other vacancies out, because those terms are not done until June 30th, you can do that. I kept it the same to keep office...
Let's see how many applications we get, maybe.
Okay, and we can do that too.
Hey, on 13, items removed from Senate Agenda, there were none. Number 14, City Managers Report.
One second, I gotta finish getting my guy over to this. We're good. Everything every day has been part of a meeting, whether it's a CED planning, historical, Tifa, pension.
Budget.
The last two days have been budget, I do want to thank everybody for that. That was, in my eight, nine years of being a part of that process, that was the most fun and enjoyable a budget process has ever been. So thank you for that. I will end, this is my last meeting, you guys will see me up here. You'll see me, obviously, at the podium for other things, but I want to thank all of you for your support, thank my family for their support. I've got to know some people on some deeper levels through different board meetings and such. I know there were a lot of rumors when I first took over, I hope that I've proved those rumors wrong. I had no ill intentions by coming here. I'm an ethical guy, I preach doing the right thing, and that's what I am about. There's no bull crap with me, I'm a tell it how it is kind of a guy. And if anybody ever needs anything along the way, please, please find me at the Police Department, so if anybody has any further questions, let me know, but thanks for everything.
So normally when you have an interim position like Jim, you'll see a spike in legal fees, it didn't happen because, I just want to tell you, Jim was as responsive and as thorough as your prior, you know, City Manager positions. It was more of working with a person than it was an interim. So there was no rise, there was no extra costs, which there normally are. Did a nice job. Did a nice job. Pleasure to talk to him every day.
Every other day.
Yeah.
Ish. One other thing though, before we go, utility billing tax roll letters went out with the 5/1/23 due date for outstanding balances. I was told I needed to advise that. Another thing, Mike said that he put some kayak launch, on the kayak launch, he put some tape on there and helped that out. And the third thing is, you know, for those of you that didn't get a chance to meet Scott, so I did everything that I could, you know, use the analogy, we're on a ship and I was holding on to the wheel and we may have bounced off the rocks a couple times, but at least I didn't sink the boat. So Scott is going to come aboard and he is going to plot us a destination. And this is the most excited I have truly been as a chief in the last couple of years on Scott coming in and leading this city where we need to be. So I'm excited for the future and to work with Scott, so that's all I have.
All right, 15, Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports. That's not the bill?
I guess Planning Commission's got a lot more to do. We'll have that meeting. And I just want to thank the chief for, and clerk down there, for stepping up in this position and made everything easier for us. Thank you.
Mr. Bryson?
I have a couple things. Again, first, Jim, Jason, thank you for everything you've done. I know it hasn't been easy, so again, thank you for what you've done for the city in getting us to this point. I'd also like to thank everyone who helped with this grant application for 300 Broadway, regardless if it goes through, you know, if it's approved or not, you all did amazing work. And even if it's not approved, it's an amazing tool that you can build on. So again, thank you for that. And just as an extra thank you, if you ever find yourselves in need of white oak, I have a very large supply of gently and not-so-gently-used white oak logs. So if you need them, I'm happy to donate them to you.
I saw them laying there.
There's a lot, well, those are, the ones on the mainland are still for me, but I have a lot of other ones that I pulled out. So that's it.
Mr. Hill-Frank?
All right. Yeah, obviously, a little disappointed with the way the recreational marijuana businesses' discussion went tonight. I don't have any dog in this fight. I mean, I don't care if it's marijuana businesses or any, as long as we're getting businesses to fill these storefronts, that's, that's all I'm worried about. You know, that was a top-three concern for our voters going into the election, was empty storefronts. And, you know, for me personally, I try to keep my personal opinions out of decision-making whenever possible, and I try to represent the people that voted for me. And mostly these people have zero problems with recreational dispensaries, and it's actually something they want, again, and they also want their storefronts filled. We have a water plant that's underutilized. If we get more water use, maybe we have a chance at keeping these bills from increasing every single year. We have, we had the budget meeting just yesterday and, you know, we're talking about all the infrastructure needs that our water and sewer plant needs. So I just don't think it's very responsible to turn down money at this point. We're talking $100,000 to $200,000 extra a year this city could make doing this. As far as the two different locations, I mean, the one on Thompson Drive is adjacent to actual houses, so I'm a little confused why that location would be narrowed down. Also, the other location on Plank Road, the only option there would be north of Plank Road, south of Plank Road, we do not own. So, and there's already businesses there. So I'm a little confused. If we truly, truly, truly want to talk about adequate setbacks and not just opting out of marijuana businesses altogether, like, what are we doing here, you know? If we really don't want the businesses, then just strike it down, stop playing games, send it back to Planning Commission, because it seems like more than I thought, don't want them. And mics, I got a lot of complaints, people can't hear what we're saying. Rita, yours is like a mile away. So we got to make sure that we get these mics closer to our mouths.
Stepping on the cord.
A lot of people just can't hear it.
It keeps moving, I've been watching you all night.
And so let's, let's try to work on that. Meetings.
We were chuckling, we were chuckling.
You guys ready there? All right, so meetings, you brought up, Jim, how you're in a meeting every single day with these various boards. I think we got to talk about consolidating some of these things. We got boards that have a lot of redundancy, you know? I can think of two, two, there's four different boards that really need to be consolidated into two. And that'll save our clerk a lot of work, that'll save our City Manager from being at a lot of meetings. I just don't think they're necessary, so we really need to talk about consolidating some of these. Let's see, wrote that down, I don't remember what the point I was going to make. Oh, yes, the budget meetings being some of the best, you know, that the administration has dealt with in this commission, I think that's awesome. And I really appreciate you guys saying that, that means a lot to me personally, being a new guy up here, to hear that. And that should speak a lot to the voting base as well, that you guys made a right decision, you know? If they're having the best budget meetings they've ever could remember, obviously you guys picked the right people. And I just want to thank Jim and us also, Jason, you guys have picked up the slack where, for one of you guys, I don't know what we're going to do. We've been, we would be in a lot deeper hole, for sure. And, you know, I know, Jim, it got rocky there for a minute, but we got through it and I'm just stoked that you guys stuck with it and we got through it and it's, it's looking great. Like, I really, really, really am so optimistic about the future, so, thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
All right. We did have a historical commission meeting and we made more progress on the historical property inventory for the Nautical Mile District. It's nice, we're going to be able to operate by consolidating to a single spreadsheet, so that's very helpful. And I'm going to help anybody else out who's, doesn't have access to that in order to help populate it. Yes, major, major, major thanks to Jim and Jason. You guys were absolutely clutch in getting us through this time and I'm excited to see what Scott has in store for us, so happy there. Again, thanks to everybody involved in the budget meetings, Mary Ellen and Nicole and Christina, great people and a very thorough, fluid, and well-done budget meeting process. The last thing I want to comment on is earlier last week, my daughter texted me and asked if I could be chaperone to a field trip they were taking to SC4 for the Challenger Learning Center, and this thing is amazing. I never thought that we had anything like this in our area. So it's named the Challenger Learning Center after the ill-fated shuttle mission that sadly came down with a teacher also aboard Krista McCullough in 1986. And what we were told is that after that time, only months after, apparently, the families of those astronauts felt that in order to continue that mission, that they would start this Challenger Learning Center. And here we are, it's 1986, it's 2023, and there are 40 of these across the nation. This is the only full-service one in Michigan, and it's right up at SC4. It's absolutely amazing, they take the kids in, these were seventh graders, they basically went on a simulated space mission to the moon and back. And it was, I mean, everybody had specific jobs, you know, these were cantankerous seventh graders and everybody was laser-focused, had something to do, and it was just a really, really exciting thing to see. So it brought a tear to my eye, both due to the incident, but then knowing that that incident blossomed into this wonderful thing that we have across the nation. And again, only one in our state at full service, there's one, a smaller one, I believe, at Selfridge. But it is something very exciting, and if you ever get a chance to experience it or be a chaperone for your kid's field trip, do. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Rourke?
I'd like to thank Jim and Jason for stepping in. I know it was a touch-and-go there for a while, but you guys did a really good job and I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Mary Ellen for stepping in, helping us with the budget. She was really good at explaining and answering questions and helping us out. And I'm looking forward to working with Scott Atkins as our new City Manager, that it is kind of exciting to have somebody with his experience come in and help us out, so that's all.
Mr. Hendrick?
I'm going to thank you too. I'm going to apologize though to poor Jason, because he still has to stay...
A little longer.
He's got to stay as clerk a little longer until we get that replacement.
The good news is that contract is done, that'll be brought before you May 4th, so there's light at the end of his tunnel, too.
You guys have done a fabulous job. I know how hard it was, I know what we've all been through. So, yeah, it's phenomenal. I think Scott's going to do a great job for us. I think he's going to, he's already, he's already entrenched in getting things done here, which is just fabulous. So it's going to be good to see all the stuff. Mary Ellen did a good job working with you on the budget. I mean, she'll still tell you that budget, it scares her to death and it does all of us because we don't have everything all reconciled. So she did a really, really good job with what she had. Hopefully, hopefully, I know she doesn't have too much more time left, but hopefully we can find something, we can get all these records cleaned up, fixed up, and get that whole area of the treasury back on track so that we don't have a repeat audit of last year. So, other than that, and thanks to Little League, glad you guys were, we could help you out. And hopefully, the kayak launch, hopefully whatever he did helps part of the problem, we'll see.
So there was some tape.
that budget, it scares her to death, and it does all of us, because we don't have everything all reconciled. So she did a really, really good job with what she had. Hopefully, hopefully, I know she doesn't have too much more time left, but hopefully, we can find something, we can get all these records cleaned up, fixed up, and get that whole area of the treasury back on track, so that we don't have a repeat audit of last year. So, other than that, and thanks, Little League, glad you guys were, we could help you out. And hopefully, the kayak launch, hopefully, whatever he did helps part of the problem.
So there was some tape.
Yeah, we'll see if I get any more complaints on that one. So anyway, thanks, everybody, I'm done.
I kind of reiterate a lot of what's already been said. Thank you to Jim and Jason. You guys, it just is beyond words what you've done for us, and the positions that you guys were put in and you accepted to get us through this time, that we needed you. Thank you. And Jason, we'll see you again next meeting. One more. And just like everyone else said, too, the budget meetings was my first in this position. I've been through them through the Fire Authority, but to do the citywide ones, and I don't think I could have asked for a better experience for my, my first meetings for those. And a big thank you to Mary Ellen. Not only did she take on a lot of that work, but she's also, you could see her actively showing, you know, Nicole and Christina things, and it was great to see that. And she definitely commanded the room, just like before, I said yes ma'am many times. But, and she did a good job of thoroughly explaining things, and then coming up with different options that we had to get through the things that we needed to maybe increase or decrease or move around. So, so that was a very good experience. I want to thank everybody who worked on the grant for 300 Broadway. It was a heck of a task in a very short period of time. And to see the groups that came together, normally, you see those groups, they kind of pack it, you know, and doing their things. But to come in together and do that, it showed a real community effort, and, and it was very special, and I hope good things for the grant. But we need more involvement like that. And it was nice to see then people who, you know, joining in then, even that you wouldn't have expected, you know, to see all these people come together for that. So, thank you very much for that.
Can I add one thing to the budget thing? We did tape the budget meetings, and weren't sure on the first one, but we're pretty sure it's all there, so hopefully they'll be online. It's a good thing to watch, because if you listen to our DPW director and all the issues we have, it's very, very important you hear the, what we're up against for the budget and things to come. So, hopefully they'll be on soon.
Okay.
Can I just, sorry?
Sure.
Yeah, I didn't thank Mary Ellen, because I just really wanted to do that. You know, in that first, I was the one that called her, in that first conversation, as far as I know, she wanted to work for free. Like, that's how much Mary Ellen is dedicated to this city. She literally did not want to take money, and she was just so concerned, just like, like a mom, like Mary Ellen is the mom of Marine City, in my mind. Like, really, she is. So, I just, thank you, Mary Ellen. I hope you see this, but I just can't say that enough.
All right. I also missed thanking the grant writers, and everybody involved with that, and I just wanted to make sure it was heard. Thank you so much.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Or adjourned?